Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council for Monday, May 15, 2017. I'd ask everyone in attendance to rise and join us in singing "O Canada." Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We'll move into the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Can I have a motion to adopt that set of minutes from May 1? Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I would move that City Council approve the city council meeting held Monday, May 1, 2017, and the minutes presented.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Anything that we need to change or adjust before we adopt them? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I will call for the vote. Please vote to adopt that set of minutes. Thank you. That motion carries, and then we need a motion for the adoption of the agenda. We have one additional item. Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you again, Mayor Given. I would move that council adopt the agenda with the addition of 8.1, appointment to the subdivision development appeal board.
Thanks very much, Councillor Thiessen. Any discussion or debate on the agenda as recommended? Again, seeing nobody, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, and that brings us to the delegation portion of our agenda. This is an opportunity that exists at every regular city council meeting. It's an opportunity for anybody in the community to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. Sometimes we do have delegations that let us know in advance that they're coming, and we have one of those this evening. We have a delegation from our local RCMP detachment with respect to an update on crime. I see Superintendent McKinnon and Inspector Peterson here. If you would join us at the presenter's table, gentlemen, and make yourself welcome.
Councillors, I'm very pleased to come here tonight to discuss the present situation of crime in Grand Prairie, and it's much brighter than my last presentation, if you remember, in the fall of 2015. I'd like to start off with, oops, oh, boy, excuse me, sorry, my apologies, some criminal code comparisons over the last few years, from 2013 to 2017, and I'm only looking at January to April statistics because that's as far as we have for accuracy so far. But the crime statistics are lower this year than they were last year, and in fact, they're the lowest they've been in five years.
Councillor, if you could maybe, yeah, if you could hold your questions and maybe just jot them down so we don't forget, we'll let our presenters get through their presentation and then follow up with questions at the end.
And to look at the full-year comparison, there's some certain key indicators that certainly are important to the public. One would be the robberies, break-in-enters, theft of motor vehicles, and drug files. And so if we look at some of the past years, such as 2013, where there were 46, 2014 for robberies, there were 90, and in 2015, there were 130 robberies in the city of Grand Prairie. 2016 fell almost in half to 69 robberies. Break-in-enters have also fallen in 2016 for the full-year comparison, and again, theft of motor vehicles, almost in half from what it was in 2015, so 2016, half the number of stolen vehicles. And drug files have also fallen for 2016. Some other indicators are, of course, homicides, and in 2013 and 14, there are three in each year. 2015, we had seven homicides. Now, this also includes the County of Grand Prairie because a lot of these incidents involve people from Grand Prairie and outside of Grand Prairie and all of our resources. And in 2016, in total, there were three. This year to date, there have been no homicides. Now, after my presentation in 2015 with the support of council, we started a Grand Prairie Drug Section, and I'd like to report on some of the initiatives that have happened and some of the successes. In 2014, of course, that's when we first really saw the problem with fentanyl and exploded in popularity in the city of Grand Prairie, and of course, this led to significant increases in, of course, thefts, drug decks, the sex trade, addictions, and drug dealing, and major fentanyl drug enforcement that began in 2014. Now, some of the projects that we've had over the last three years, there's more than 20 separate projects, and in that time, approximately 12,000 fentanyl pills have been seized locally, and the project seizures, they range from 50 to 3,700. And some of this predates the creation of the Drug Section, which started in January of 2016. And just going back over the last six months for our local Drug Section, we've had 15-person charges with a total of 90, 90 charges. Forty of them are the Controlled Drugs and Substances Act, 27 firearms-related charges, and 23 other criminal code charges, and also two persons were arrested on Canada-wide warrants. And some of the notable files, starting over the last six months in October, a drug dealer observed making multiple transactions throughout the city, followed to a large apartment complex and stopped, where 75 grams of cannabis, resin, and $385 in cash, as well as various drug paraphernalia, was seized. And in November 2016, warrants executed on a southeast neighborhood residence by our Drug Section, and the house was associated to organized crime, and at that time, 2,000, over 2,000 fentanyl pills, 56 grams of cocaine, four grams of crystal meth, three and a half grams of marijuana, and $9,000 in cash, as well as a stolen handgun, were seized. And in December of 2016, 27 fentanyl pills and another warrant at an apartment complex downtown, four grams of crystal meth, one gram of crack, and a stolen handgun. And of course, with the drug trade comes also violence, as you can see, with the firearms that have been seized. And in January of this year, a drug house, another search warrant was executed, south of downtown, and this is where two criminals were picked up on Canada-wide warrants, fentanyl pills, marijuana, cannabis resin, cocaine, crystal meth, as well as a sawed-off shotgun, a taser, machete, multiple crossbows, and a police scanner were seized. And in March of this year, a traffic stop of a drug dealer at a convenience store on the southeast side, our Drug Section seized 33 grams of cocaine, 26 fentanyl pills, brass knuckles, and $10,000 in cash. And as our Drug Section is, its job is to target those that are causing the most harm in our communities, and it's oftentimes the lower-level, street drug traffickers that are causing the most problems. And a lot of these people are also addicts themselves, and that's how they support their habits. And in April of this year, another traffic stop where our Drug Section, on the east-side Commercial Plaza, seized 325 grams of marijuana, $725 in cash, and various drug paraphernalia. And in April of this year, a more notable warrant executed in Wembley, and this is a regional drug trafficker, and the person associated, of course, to organized crime, and we'd see 71 and a half grams of cocaine, 28 grams of crystal meth, 1.5 liters of GHB. Now, that's the date rape drug, it's commonly known as. 91 grams of marijuana, over 1,000 various pharmaceutical pills, two stolen firearms, a handgun and an assault rifle, and also various illegally possessed firearms as well. Now, the other section with the support of city council that we created was our Crime Reduction Unit, and our Crime Reduction Unit was given the task to go after, of course, crimes of the day, as well as some of our habitual offenders, and of course, some of our offenders that have adopted the criminal lifestyle. They continue on with that criminal lifestyle until they're caught. And what we try to do is offer them a way out. If they're drug addicts, we can help them get into treatment, and if they're homeless, well, we can help them try to find a home. And some of their statistics for our Crime Reduction Unit, just over the past nine months, they've written 12 search warrants, they've executed 221 warrants, they've laid 188 criminal charges, they've breached charges, they've laid 63, they've done 386 curfew checks and other checks, such as hotspots, checking on sex offenders, 312. They've recovered 67 vehicles and targeted 11 habitual offenders. And of course, with those habitual offenders, also, we work with some of our partner agencies to give them the opportunity to leave their criminal lifestyle. In January of this year, on an east-side residence, was identified as a drug house with high amounts of traffic, the Crime Reduction Unit did a warrant after several weeks of investigation, seizing 18.5 grams of cocaine, $940 in cash, an extendable baton, as well as other minor quantities of methamphetamine and marijuana. Also in January 2017, their Crime Reduction Unit conducted surveillance on a known drug dealer near the mall, and after the surveillance, they initiated a stop, and they arrested the subject, and they found 58 grams of cocaine, 26 grams of marijuana, and $4,000 in cash. In March of this year, a warrant was executed on a west-side residence, and persons who are associated with organized crime, we seized 133 grams of cocaine, $2,400 in cash, and of course, various drug paraphernalia. Our Crime Reduction Unit also, recently, we had a case of a suicidal male threatening self-harm, and he actually pointed a firearm at police. He was subdued, and with our Crime Reduction Unit, we were seized 440 grams of cocaine, 475 grams of cannabis, five firearms, three of which were loaded, and $17,000 in cash, as well as various drug paraphernalia. And in May of 2017, the Crime Reduction Unit attempted to stop two known property and drug criminals, and they fled from us, but were later found and arrested. And when they were arrested, a stolen handgun was recovered, as well as a stolen license plate, and of course, the car was unregistered. So I just, one of the results of the council's support in starting a Crime Reduction Unit, as well as a Drug Section, as you can see, and there's been a noticeable impact on the community as well. Although we are tracking our habitual offenders, we're of course trying to become more efficient as well, and we've started something called a ComStat Crime Reduction Initiative. Now, ComStat, that originated down in the United States, and basically, it means computer statistics. So using an analyst, we find out who our most prolific offenders are, and we target them. And of course, we target them to help change them out of that lifestyle, but also to stop them from harm in the community. Now, initiative overview, it's a prevention and deterrence via focus on, of course, our prolific offenders, our crime hotspots, and emerging trends. And it's to prevent and deter targeted priority crimes. If we notice there's a spike in break-in-enters in a certain area, it helps us concentrate our efforts on that particular area of the city. And it allows us to be far more nimble in that, instead of waiting two or three months to categorize the statistics, we're able to take them out of the computer, put them on maps, find out exactly where the problems are, and then react more efficiently. And once we have the meetings, about the ComStat meetings, we assign certain groups within my detachment as being responsible, and so it adds a layer of accountability for what they've done to prevent further crimes in that area. So it's proactive intelligence-based analysis of crime data, and it's based on best practices, and it's tailored to serve the needs of law enforcement in Grand Prairie. Now, this is new with our analysts. We've just started this, and we're hoping that this will even further increase our efficiency and our ability to deal with crime proactively in the city. So our goal is to reduce property losses due to crime, reduce time loss and the cost burden of repeat offenders, and improve the local public perception around the fear of crime. Now, this is more of a snapshot of what's going on today, and of course, we have certain partners that are dealing with issues that have happened in the past. I know that 2014 and 15, crime rates are very high, and something such as a homicide trial, that takes a lot of resources, and an example would be our Crown Prosecutor, and dealing with those, our Crown would still be working with those files from a year or two ago. With ComStat, it's utilization of additional analytic resources, mapping, and of course, data analysis. Nothing says, nothing's more helpful than a picture, a photograph of areas of the city, finding the hotspots, and then assigning certain units to deal with that, and then finding out what was done.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. Certainly appreciate the presentation and update. There may be some council members that have questions. The first in the queue and quick on the draw, so to speak, was Councillor Logan. Councillor Logan.
Thank you very much. Tremendous report. I guess I was curious as to the people that have grown up and live in Grand Prairie as opposed to coming in from elsewhere. Do you have any handle on the patterns with that?
We don't normally track where somebody has originally come from, as far as crime statistics go. It's, with people, we found that people get involved in the drug trade. It seems to be a rather a large problem. Once they become an addict, wherever they come from, they have that compulsion to take more and more drugs, and the easiest way for them to earn money is to sell drugs. And so they're in the industry, and they are drug addicts, become our drug salesmen.
Councillor Rice.
I have three questions, actually. You mentioned at the first one that the crime stats are down.
Yes.
Is that just a reflection of the economy, or?
That's a very good question, and actually, the economy's picking up, and crime is still on the decline. So I would have to probably be a sociologist to answer that. And I know that when there's a downturn in the economy, I know Edmonton, their crime picked up, and of course, they, I believe it was the chief of police, Rod Connect, said that it was Fort McMurray, people leaving Fort McMurray. As far as the economy, it's been, it's been very steady in Grand Prairie compared to a lot of other communities, and I can see now, if we look at even just the amount of trucks on our roads, the economy has really picked up. And again, crime is still at a five-year low.
So this is just a, I don't know, a quick math question. 12,000 fentanyl, what would be the street value of that?
Well, that's a good question. I'll have to get my calculator, and it depends also when it was seized. I remember at one time, fentanyl started off at about $80, it fell to 50, and then it was down to 20, and now apparently, it's back up to 80 because there's a shortage of.
A pill, or like, I don't know, does it come in a pill or a pound, or?
A pill.
Okay. All right. And my third question, you said that you, one of the initiatives you had was targeting habitual offenders. How do you target them?
Well, when somebody has been charged with a crime, such as drug trafficking, and they're released by the courts, what we do is we, our Crime Reduction Unit, go and meet with them, and we hold them accountable to all their court conditions. We also, if they're willing, will sit down and have an interview with them of their lifestyle, find out what some of their issues are, and we can connect them with social services. If they're a drug addict, then we can help them get into treatment to deal with their drug problem. And if they don't want to, they don't want to do those things, and they want to keep the criminal lifestyle, then we're going to go after them and get them back into jail.
And I have one last question. It seemed to me during the last provincial budget, there was a lot of concern about they were going to dismantle or cut down the funding for Alert. So what happened there?
Oh, I'm not, I believe Alert received its funding.
So the appeals, if you will, from the public and its track record served it well.
I believe so. I believe so. And we work with Alert quite closely on some of our files, especially some of our integrated child exploitation files. And recently, I was talking to one of our staff sergeants in GIS, and they're doing an arrest, well, on average, right now, per week for child pornography. So that seems to be a real issue. I was recently able to sponsor some investigators from Alert to do a presentation to the Alberta Association of Chispa Police so that they get a resolution to support some of their efforts against child pornography.
Just one more, if I can.
We do have a queue. Councillor Rice.
Are we full? Do we have our full state of officers, or are we still waiting for some and have three on maternity leave, or what?
That's a very good question, and there's always a vacancy rate, and it becomes from that, whether somebody gets hurt, or somebody's off, or somebody's transferred out, because there's always a bit of a lag. And we also have promotional opportunities, and so that also leaves vacancies. When someone is promoted and they leave, then it takes six months to a year to replace that person.
Thank you.
Thanks, Councillor Rice. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Couple of quick questions. You said stolen vehicles down in half, so that's what, 1.5 a day now, average? So we'll be number one in Canada, it's around there?
Oh, I, you know, I don't think we'll be number one again, unless crime has radically fallen everywhere else. I don't think that's happened. It's, I think the McLean's will be much different when it comes out this summer.
Okay, a couple more questions. We heard about fentanyl quite a bit, but we've seen it hit, and there was car fentanyl, and that's really, I mean, they're both bad. Have we seen it around this area?
No, I haven't. I've heard about it in Calgary and then coming up into this area, but we don't have any alert seizures of car fentanyl. And it's one of those things, too, if somebody overdoses, we may never find out exactly what they had, unless, of course, they die and there's an autopsy. But if they receive an oxalone, an oxalone, then we wouldn't know exactly what the overdose was from.
Just a couple more questions, asking them quick here. I see that there's a more presence, it could be because of dollars allocated and attending schools, I want to say kudos to you guys, that wasn't lacking for a few years, and I'm glad you could speak to that. Motorbike patrols, I've been hearing some good rumors of that in the community, and the other one is your in-the-park. I want to know about your attending schools and in-the-park bike patrols, pedal bikes.
Well, our community policing, we have members of community policing, we're actually going to be starting, another thing, too, is the DARE program in the schools again in the fall. And we have partnerships with enforcement services, and we will be in the park on bicycles, but also on ATV as well.
Just to finish up, that last one, in the park for ladies and stuff, in the park is very important.
Yes, that's right.
Thanks, Councillor McLean. Councillor O'Toole.
Here we are. Thank you. I got a question, I'm not sure if you're able to answer it or not, but at one point in time, the caseload per officer was near 40 cases. Is that gone down now because of the amount of officers that we've actually supported and the crime rate?
I'm quite certain the call volume is down. I remember in 2015, there would be, a watch would come in, and there would be 80 to 100 calls, and just this evening, there were 40 calls for the watch, which is much better, although I couldn't identify the exact number of files per officer. I should be able to do that later on, probably in the next month or so.
Thank you very much for, I guess, the leadership and making all this stuff happen because it's showing in the community as well.
Thank you very much. I have to say that I really appreciate the council's support, and without your support in creating a Drug Section and a Crime Reduction Unit, we wouldn't have had the successes we've had.
Thanks, Councillor O'Toole. Councillor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just piggybacking off of Councillor Rice's question regards to vacancies, can you give us an idea of where we're at currently in terms of the number of vacancies?
There are a few vacancies, not very many. At one time, we had a much higher vacancy rate, but our vacancy rate right now is fairly low. I couldn't give you an accurate number, but I could go back and figure that out. For an example, we have three vacant sergeant positions. However, June 1, we have one of the sergeants coming in, and hopefully by July, we'll have another sergeant in. So we've had those vacancies for the sergeants for the year. We've had a few in our general investigations section, and our community policing is full. And we also have a few vacancies in our traffic section, which will be filled very shortly.
Just one follow-up. Could you speak to nightly patrols and sort of what you have for that and how those operate?
Nightly patrols? Well, I could tie the nightly patrols partially into the ComStat model, in that when we have our analysts pull out where a crime is happening in the city, then watches are assigned certain areas of the city that they have to focus their efforts on. For example, if we have a large number of vehicles being broken into in one area of the city, that's where the watch commander's going to be responsible for directing the patrols to go to. Also, any other hotspots? We've had a few complaints from some areas of the city of the sex trade. And so with that particular one, we've had our Crime Reduction Unit going there and deterring would-be clients, and also our police and crisis team reaching out to some of the people involved in the sex trade to offer them a way out. We'll also run some more programs through some of the hotels, because a lot of it, the sex trade is run on the back pages, something called the back pages, which is a part of the internet, so they're not actually out on the street. And so we will run projects where we will invite people to come to hotel rooms, presumably for the sex trade, and from there, we'll have police officers, and we'll have some of our partners with either Aurora House or other NGOs to offer the people that are working the sex trade to leave, to leave in a way out.
Councillor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Thank you very much for the presentation, your gentleman, and for all the success and hard work that you've gone through over the past couple of years. My question is in regards to the number of charges that have been laid over the past little while, I think it was just over a year, 188 charges and 63 breach, I'm guessing breach of parole charges.
Breach of probation, breach of parole, breach of recognizance, just some court condition.
So in total, that's about 251 charges that have been laid, hopefully multiple charges to some people. But one thing council's been lobbying for, for a long time with the province, and I know we have your back on that, too, is ensuring that a lot of these repeat offenders and the worst offenders actually go to trial. And with the backlog at our Crown Prosecutor's Office, how many of these people do you think will be back out on the street and with the potential to reoffend?
That is a very good question, and it's one of those things that unfortunately, I have to leave with the Crown Prosecutor and his office, and we certainly support them, and we know how busy they are. I know that of late, it also made it into the media that charges were being stayed, and a lot of this came from the Jordan decision, which is Supreme Court of Canada decision that said if somebody's charged them before the courts for too long, then the charges will just be dismissed. And in other jurisdictions, people who've been charged with homicides have walked away. So it's very disappointing, and as far as, we certainly advocate on behalf of the Crown Prosecutor getting resources.
Okay, thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thanks, Councillor Thiessen. Gentlemen, thanks very much for the presentation on the impact of some of the improvements or extra resourcing that council supported. Over the last couple of years, though, council also had a discussion around investigating whether or not there was any utility to increased interprovincial collaboration, specifically with Dawson Creek, and I know that that conversation has been happening, and I wonder if you could just provide an update as to what took place there and any other interprovincial collaborations happened over the last while.
Well, Craig is the operations officer. I'm going to turn that over to you, and I see him smiling. see him smiling.
Absolutely. We all know there's no borders between criminals, and there's a lot of movement between us and Dawson Creek, and you can even include Fort St. John in that. One of the big initiatives we, we partnered up with Dawson Creek recently was auto thefts, that was brought up here earlier. And we had some, some very good success with using our bait vehicles between us and Dawson Creek. That's just one of the initiatives. Another one was our drug section is working with the drug section and the combined forces, which is the same as Alert out of Prince George. And they're targeting the same individuals that are actually running from Lower Mainland up to Prince George through Dawson and into Grand Prairie. So there is a really good networking effort going on and, and communication going back and forth. And it, it's become formalized now, where there are quarterly meetings amongst the group to share intelligence, share names, and, and bring everybody together. Because like I say, we all know that, that the border doesn't stop, so I, I think it's, it's been a big improvement. I might be a little biased, but I think everybody's working really hard on it.
There was one initiative, too, that as, it was one fellow that was a chronic car thief here in Grand Prairie, and working with Dawson Creek, we'd tracked him all through the rural area as well, different communities, and all the way to Dawson Creek to steal vehicles, and he's finally arrested back in this area. But of course, again, it was, the, the operation really involved Dawson Creek, and Craig is our lead on, on that, on that integration.
Thank you. And then just as we get into the summer season, you know, over, in past years, there's lots of different behaviors that we'll see sort of flare up in different areas of the community. And I wonder if in terms of planning, how the detachment is sort of looking at their summer operations plan, and if you're making any special consideration of the way our traffic patterns, sorry, pedestrian traffic patterns and, and sex trade workers and other things might change over the course of the summer.
Oh, yes, well, we are a, our traffic unit, we're going to be far more integrated with municipal enforcement, and we're just actually, today, it's interesting you mention that, we're looking at the schedule that'll be coming up, as we'll have officers from the detachment working directly with enforcement services. And we're also looking at the summer festivals that'll be going on in the area as well. And we've started planning our resource deployment for those.
Thanks very much. Councillor Rice, do you still have any additional questions, if you want to just get your microphone?
Okay, just following up on that, I know councillor McLean mentioned the bike patrol in the park, but are we going to have a bike patrol this year out in the community?
Okay, bike patrols in the community. When we have the bike patrols, we will most likely be with our, with our partners in enforcement services. And is there a specific area of the community you're thinking of?
No, it's just nice to have them.
Yes.
And I know that there's been trouble in the past, or difficulty in the past, getting people to sign up for bike patrol, but...
I know, I believe we're running one course. We have a trainer who trains members on the bike patrol, and he's being transferred out to depot to run their firearm, the firearms program. And he's going to be putting on a bicycle course before he leaves to get as many members trained on the bicycle as, as possible. It's very interesting, though, saying that there's training on a bicycle, but there, there is a lot to do on how to chase people, people down, how to protect yourself using a bicycle, how to go across country that, that normally people wouldn't learn just on the day-to-day operation of a bicycle.
And this will be my last, I promise. This will be the great, one of the big problems we had in the past was that BC worked on a different, it's not PERS, but very, they worked on a, so we couldn't talk back and forth, and that created some serious time lags, that's not been addressed.
Oh, yes, that's, that's an interesting thing, that they're on Versadex, which is, they call it BC Prime, and we have another program called PROS that doesn't, they don't talk to each other, and, but we do have, we can get access to, to their databases, just as they can get access to ours, but it does take a little bit of work.
Yeah, absolutely. It is different reporting programs, but what's really changed is everybody has a cellphone now. And because we've really come together and networked so much better, that we all have each other's phone numbers, and it's really, really saved us in that lack of communication, whether it be on the radio or through the computer, is that the cellphones are, are saving grace right now, until we, we do get an integrated radio program.
Thank you.
I see one last question in the queue, councillor McLean.
Mayor Given, just a quick one. Are you, with Grand Prairie, the city compared to Eminence, Calgary, if you're an officer in a bigger city living, do you find different ways of protecting the officers from, say, certain critters in, in the community that's small, that, you know, basically when work's done, they're safe? Are you finding certain protocols where you're, you're helping them out more, maybe because of this area, because it's small, people know people more? Are you finding any problems there, is what I'm asking, towards your officers?
Oh, you know, that does, that does come up, and having a work-life balance is very important, and being able to go home and be the king of your castle and not have to worry about, about some of the criminal element is also very important. We do, if something like that does happen, and it has happened in the past, we, we do everything that we can to, to make sure that the members, again, are, are safe at, at home. And, and there have been some people, people who have tried to intimidate, even off-duty, some of our police officers. And, but we, I would say that we, we deal with that quite strictly, and we'll do everything in our power to make sure that, that doesn't happen. And that, again, when people go home, they should feel safe, and we won't stand for that.
Thank you.
I don't see anybody else in the queue. Gentlemen, thanks for being here tonight to present this update. I think council's gratified to see the, you closed the loop, so to speak, on the discussion that we started a number of years ago with respect to resources and the concern the community had with, with crime and safety. It's great to see that those resources have been used effectively to the benefit of the community, and thank you so much for reporting back to council and providing that update.
Thank you. Thank you for having us.
So this delegation portion of our agenda exists, as I said, at every regular city council meeting. It is an opportunity to come forward and address council. You don't have to have let us know ahead of time that you were coming, as our RCMP delegation did. So if there was anybody else out in the, in the gallery that wanted to come and address council, now would be the time, as long as it isn't something that's the subject of a public hearing. I know we have a couple of public hearings on our agenda tonight, and I don't see anybody looking like they're coming forward for the delegation portion, so I would just leave that reminder that this does, this opportunity does exist at every regular city council meeting. So I'll close the delegation portion of our agenda, we'll move to unfinished business. And item 6.1, the Vision West Park Outline Plan Amendment and Associated Land Use Bylaw Plan Amendment. This is a matter that is carried over from our previous council meeting. We have third and final reading to give to this bylaw. Councillor Rice.
I would move third reading of bylaw C 1353. It's a bylaw to adopt the Vision West Business Park Outline Plan.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Councillor, is there a need for an introduction from administration? We saw this just at last council. I'm not seeing anybody asking for an introduction from administration, so I will call for the vote on third reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries, councillor Rice.
And I would move third reading of bylaw C 1260-71, being an amendment to the land use bylaw as a reflection of the above motion that just passed.
Thanks very much councillor Rice. Open for discussion and debate. Any discussion or debate, council, on this motion for third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries as well. I think that handles all of our unfinished business, and would take us into item 7.1, public hearing for bylaw C 1329, the West Industrial ASP, and bylaw C 1322, the Airport Industrial Outline Plan. I would call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the item for your consideration is repealing and replacing West Industrial ASP with an updated version that's been modified to accommodate the proposed Airport Industrial Outline Plan and the adoption of the Airport Outline Plan. So the subject area is on the western side of the city, directly south of the airport and adjacent to Highway 43. It incorporates roughly a section and a half of land in mainly industrial parcels. This area was part of the 2016 annexation, and the Airport Industrial Outline Plan was initially an area structure plan submitted to the county. When the annexation took place, the application was already quite far along. And so in order to try and smooth the process of transitioning from city, from county to city process, we are doing things slightly differently than we usually would. So what occurred was that the city administration amended the West Industrial Area Structure Plan to incorporate these lands and had the Airport Industrial Document turned into an outline plan. This way, we were able to maintain a process of creating area structure plans ahead of outline plans and simply incorporate the area into an already existing plan. During this process, several other applications came forward that required other amendments to the West Industrial Area Structure Plan. This includes the proposed Kensington Area Structure Plan that require removing certain areas of land from the West Industrial ASP, as well as the Vision West Outline Plan Amendment that you just voted on. To clarify that slightly, this graphic shows the areas in question in greater detail. So you can see the proposed Airport Industrial Outline Plan in the orange boundary, the current West Industrial Area Structure Plan in the blue boundary, and then the proposed Kensington Area Structure Plan in the red boundary. So you can see the red boundary overlapping the current West Industrial ASP, which is the areas being removed. So to give you some context of the planned area, the subject lands are already majoritarily commercial and industrial, and have largely been developed, at least among the eastern portion. So simplified version of that shows you the existing land uses. So it's essentially industrial all around the proposed Airport Industrial Outline Plan, including the airport to the north. These are either future industrial or existing industrial. Right now, a lot of the land is agricultural, but designated for industrial land use in the near future. Now, the anomaly we have here is the residential to the southwest of the proposed outline plan, and this is the Silverpoint Manufactured Home Community. And so design measures had to be made in order to create a buffer from this use to allow for the industrial to have less of an impact. So here we see the development concept for the West Industrial ASP. In the eastern section, it is the exact same land uses as are proposed in the existing ASP, that has not changed, and a lot of this has already been developed. However, on the western section, you can see the lands that have been added to incorporate the Airport Industrial Outline Plan. As you can see, the majority of it is general industrial with commercial arterial along Highway 43 and 124th Street. These land uses are consistent with the adjacent properties and create predictable flow from the remainder of the West Industrial Area Structure Plan. Here's a closer view of the Airport Industrial Outline Plan. As you can see, general industrial and arterial commercial, also notably a pedestrian pathway to the south, going around to the Storm Pond. This is on the Aqua Terra Public Utility Lot that will be bringing a service line out to Wembley. We've negotiated with Aqua Terra to accommodate the trail on a portion of the PUL. Because this is on largely industrial property, we didn't find a major need for municipal reserves, so the majority of it will be taken as cash and new. However, a portion of it will be taken to increase the area of the PUL that will be required to accommodate the trail. So this is roughly 0.6 hectares. We found that the trail would provide greater connectivity to other areas for the residents at Silverpoint, help to create a buffer, and also encourage active transportation in the area. Notably, there is a potential environmental impact as identified in the biophysical reports for the site. There was noted habitat with forested area and wetland. However, the area is already largely developed for agricultural and industrial use. As you can see, the forested area and the wetland are already surrounded by industrial uses. The wetland is a man-made dugout as well. However, approval from Alberta Environment and Parks will be required for the final designs. So stakeholder engagement, there were two open houses for this application, one in early 2016, when we initially received the document from the county, and then one in April of this year. We also sent out notification letters to adjacent property owners and ran ads in the newspapers. We did not, the city did not receive letters in regards to this, however, the applicant did and forwarded their comments to us. Over the course of the project, we received feedback from residents and landowners, and some of the concerns were regarding potential impact on Silverpoint, as well as the location of storm water retention ponds. So as a result of the engagement that went on with the stakeholders, significant changes were made to the design. This is largely what delayed the process for so long. So some of the major changes we saw were the relocation of the access of Sequoia Drive onto 132nd Street. Originally, there was a proposal for a joint access with Silverpoint, but people were concerned about the impact on traffic and potential negotiations with the county over access closures. There was also a major redesign of the storm water retention facilities, the addition of the walking trail, and the addition of wording to clarify the design of the berm that will be adjacent to Silverpoint. So relevant statutes and plans, both the intermunicipal development plan and the municipal development plan indicate these areas for future industrial and commercial development, as such these plans are conforming to that. So in summary, the proposed Airport Industrial Outline Plan and the revised West Industrial Area Structure Plan will allow for continued commercial and industrial development in the city. So administration recommends that all three readings be given to both of these items. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. There's an opportunity for any questions from council for administration, before we open the public hearing, to comments from the floor. Councillor Rice.
Just reassure me, Reed, that nothing in this plan would prohibit expansion of the airport.
Through the mayor, no, nothing in this plan will prevent any expansion of the airport, its compatible uses, and it respects all the subsequent regulations related from Nav Canada.
Thank you.
Thanks very much councillor Rice, councillor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So just a couple of quick questions, Reed. So we're taking cash and new in case of land, so we downsized the land we're getting. The quarter section, it equals six hectares, but now we're going to get 0.6, is that what you said? Is that correct? Like, how, what was the total hectares we would have gotten land if we didn't take the cash and new?
Mr. Drosch.
Through the mayor, we would have gotten approximately 12 hectares. The majority of the recreation facility is provided on a public utility lane, and the MR is being used to provide additional space that may be required. This allows us to get more cash and new as well.
Okay, thank you.
So 12 hectares, but we're getting 0.6 back instead of, and plus cash and new.
Mr. Drosch?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, another question. So if you go, if you're looking at the West Industrial Park in the east, and we're going to match the east, on the front, if I'm coming from Dawson Creek or coming into the city from the west side, when I drive in, what am I going to see? Ditch, fence, businesses, am I going to see any trees or pathway along 43?
And Mr. Drosch, when, when you're answering that, maybe it'd be helpful if you could have a bit of a detailed map up. There was a couple in your presentation that might help you sort of reference that, something probably at the outline plan level.
Thank you, Mayor Given. So the property along Highway 43 are going to be commercial, they'll be similar to what is already along Highway 43, it's a high-visibility corridor, so the parcels will be subject to the design and landscaping requirements of both the commercial arterial district as well as a high-visibility overlay.
So finish up, I got to finish up. So basically, it'll be kept the same, there'll be no trail, and there'll be a ditch and business going right through the ditch and then the road. It'll be just as it is right now.
Mr. Drosch?
For the time being, yes, it will be consistent with what we already seen there. As the city develops westward, we may see trails in the future to our engineering standards. That depends on, they have certain metrics for volume and travel.
To finish up, do we have enough room with the buffer? What is the buffer from the road to the boundary line of the commercial business on the West Industrial Park area on 43? Industrial Park area on forty-three? Is it sixty meters? Is it?
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry, I don't know the exact buffer. I don't have the distance from the property line to the road right of way.
So my final question is, if I'm going down one hundred and sixteen, where you talked about another development going to curtailing on the east side industrial, we do have a trail and we do have trees down one hundred and sixteen. Is that correct on the east side of one hundred and sixteen?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. I don't see any other questions for administration at this time. I don't see anybody. Councilor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Sorry, guys, I want to let you off easy here, but I did have a couple of questions. Something stuck out with me in the report. I thought it was a great report, I think the plan's all right. First one is, and you made, you touched on it in your presentation, but it said that you had a public hearing in October 2016. One of the landowners came forward with some concerns and led to the public hearing being canceled. I'm not going to assume that that was to do trails and change storm ponds unless they knew of a flood path, but is there a reason why we canceled that at all, or based on one, one landowner's concern?
Thank you, through the mayor. The, the landowner in question happened to own approximately one of the quarter sections. He had been consulted initially. However, because of the time that it elapsed between the initial consultation and the item actually going to public hearing, he received the final version when I sent the notice to property owners last fall. He came forward to me with concerns that a lot of the stormwater facilities were on his property and requested a more divided system. He also mentioned some grading issues that might impact it, and so the applicant took that into consideration and reviewed the whole design.
Okay, yeah, no, thank you very much. The other question is, and I've been trying to wrap my head around this, and I'm sorry, I should drive out to the new rural area and talk with these landowners, not just at different meetings, but over the past few months, I've been getting a lot of calls and emails in regards to a gas storage facility, I think owned by Toretto, close to the area. Is that within the planned boundary at all?
Mr. Drosch? Through the mayor, the proposed Toronto Gas Storage Facility is not within this planned area. It is in the vicinity. That will be, to my knowledge, it's going to be a very small facility. The actual gas storage takes place underground.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Reed, would you be able to bring up the, the walking trail that you had? So I'm just trying to get a sense of exactly where that walking trail is. Could you just go over that?
Sure. It might be helpful, I don't know if you can use your cursor on screen to be able to show that, that way if anybody's watching online, they'll be able to see it as well. Mr. Drosch?
Sorry, I was trying to use the laser pointer function on this.
We can see, I see the big arrow there as you, as you move it.
So as to the question, the trail is proposed along the southern boundary of the planned area and along the stormwater retention pond here in the center. There are, there is an existing trail at Silverpoint here, so during the actual design report phase, the proposed trail may simply connect to that one here rather than creating a redundant one. However, the, the point is to create connection across the whole outline plan area.
Thank you. And at this point, do we know where those are going to be dry storm ponds?
Mr. Drosch? I'm, I'm not positive. I believe they're required to be dry because of proximity to the airport.
Okay.
Well, we may, I, I see, you know, the, I see some consultants in the crowd that may be taking down some of these questions, there may be additional answers coming when we have the presentations.
All right, thank you.
Councilor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Sorry, guys, one final question. Just going over the report, it says an environmental impact, and you presented that there are some forested and wetland areas. It also says in the report that there are some fish, birds, and wildlife. But when I was going through the plan on both sections of the plan, when it talks about municipal reserve, it said there wasn't any significant environmental risks at all, I believe. Let me get there, sorry. There are no environmentally sensitive lands located within the planned area that warrant protection through the dedication of environmental reserve. So I was looking for where environmental reserve is actually on the map, and I couldn't find it, and in the report says that if anything was going to be used with those dugout ponds, I guess that wetland area, that we would have to talk with Alberta Environment and get approvals. But to me, that, if we need approval from the province, I wouldn't assume that, that it's not significant enough to, to not get any approvals. Can you put up a map perhaps and show us where those environmental reserves are that are buffering the areas that, you know, with further development, we might lose a dugout that's holding fish or that's a feeding ground for birds?
Mr. Drosch? Thank you, Mayor Given. So the actual dugout is this area here that's supposed to be extended as a storm water retention pond. It's currently a water management facility and is largely manmade. So our belief is that the continued use for anthropogenic reasons is warranted. Because it's already being used, there's not a whole lot of opportunity to get environmental reserve. There's already industrial facilities right next to it, as well as agricultural lands. And the forested area, I will just, so this is that northeastern portion, portion that we were just looking at. This is a dugout here, and this is a forested area mentioned. So as you can see from the image, it is already largely developed. It would be very difficult to negotiate environmental reserve, given that it's already a developed area and there are ongoing uses adjacent to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Thieson. Okay, I don't see anybody else in the queue at this point with questions for administration, so I will open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing and ask if there's anyone here to speak in support of the proposed West Industrial ASP and associated Airport Industrial Outline Plan. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Members of council, my name's Dave McCray, Land Use Planning Manager with ISL Engineering and Land Services in here in Grand Prairie, and with me is Scott Rossler, Helix Engineering, and we prepared the plan on behalf of the landowners. Just wanted to make a couple of, of comments in, in terms of the plan, and also there were a couple of questions that were raised earlier with administration, and perhaps we'd be able to provide some clarity on as well. And first of all, I just want to open by thanking administration for their cooperation in, in this project. It's, it's been a long and winding road. We started this project in August of 2013. I had to go back in our billing system to figure that out, but we started with this application in the county, and obviously we're caught up in the annexation, so that created some, some delays in terms of sort of rebooting and getting the project more in line with city requirements. And as a result of that effort, the, the city offered to take on the ASP amendment element of this, and so we could focus on the outline plan. And, and the city's efforts in that regard are very much appreciated, so just wanted council to be aware of that and give a shout out to administration. The, basically, yeah, the application is, is a couple, there's a couple of motivations for it, has been told, has been advised. The approval of the outline plan for the West Industrial Area, which is the project before you now, and then the upcoming Kensington ASP and outline plan, which will be in front of council in the not-too-distant future. So it was, it was basically killing two birds with one stone. I wanted to speak a little bit about the engagement process that we undertook. We met with area landowners and residents on several occasions over the course of this project, and as noted in the staff report, we held two open houses, one in January of sixteen, at which approximately twenty, twenty-five landowners attended, all from Silverpoint. And then a subsequent one, which we held just this, just this past April, which was motivated by the, by the changes to the plan as outlined by administration, and we had four landowners attend that one. We also had several meetings with Silverpoint Management over the course of the project to, to address concerns that were, that they were, that they had raised. And also subsequent to that most recent open house, we received one email concern from a resident, and I believe we were able to, to address the concerns that were raised. The primary outcome of the concerns that were raised most recently was to add more detail in the plan respecting the buffering between Silverpoint and the adjacent industrial. Mr. Drosch talked about the PUL that will contain the pond, which will be augmented by municipal reserve. It will be a minimum ten-meter-wide separation between the two, and we specified, and again, this was requested by, by the residents, a minimum two-meter-high berm with a fence, which would presumably be on the north side of that corridor, so a pretty decent separation. One of the points that we had to continually express to Silverpoint, and this, this can't be, the importance of this can't be underestimated, is that the subject land has been identified for industrial use for probably twenty, thirty years back in city and county documents and in joint documents, which predates Silverpoint. And when Silverpoint went in, those, those questions were raised and those flags were raised. So we've done our best to, to accommodate Silverpoint, knowing full well that the industrial rights were there before the residential was. So we've tried our best to balance those, and, and I think we've achieved that. The, also, one of the questions that was raised, that were raised by, by landowners was the timing of the development. We're talking about two quarter sections of industrial land, which is, essentially, development will proceed from the east to the west following servicing and so on and so forth. So the quarter section that's actually abutting Silverpoint is quite a ways down the road. The current owner has no immediate plans to develop, so it could be a number of years before any development is seen on the quarter that abuts Silverpoint. So it's not like they're going to have cats in their backyards, you know, next summer, building roads and so on. The, I, I also just wanted to speak to Councilor McLean's question or comments about municipal reserve. This is an issue that comes across, we come across a lot when we're dealing with industrial applications. We understand and appreciate council's preference to get land in, as opposed to cash and new for as much as they can, for, you know, assembling land for recreation projects and so on. The challenge in industrial areas is unless there's a defined need, for example, a recreation center, soccer pitches, that kind of thing, it's really hard to allocate municipal reserve in industrials areas, and that's why the preference is to go to the cash and new route for industrial, again, unless there's a defined need that we can actually articulate in a parks design report. So what we've used in this case with the agreement of administration is to augment the public utility lot that will have the water line in it with municipal reserve to widen the corridor adjacent to Silverpoint, and then the balance being cash and new, which would be a sizable sum over time, which the city can then apply to other recreation or parks projects across the city to augment where there's a more defined need, you know, for playground equipment or what have you. So that, that's just a comment regarding, clarifying the, the MR rationale. So that, that's basically all I have. I think Mr. Rossler has some, some comments particular, I think, regarding to the, the questions respecting storm.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Scott Rossler with Helix Engineering. So again, just run through briefly with the boring stuff as far as engineering and the servicing and whatnot of the site. So the transportation network and, that has come up with doesn't, doesn't provide any additional accesses to the highway, so everything that is, is currently there today, be it, be it either a gravel road or one hundred and twenty-fourth Street, which currently is paved, will remain. Those, these all will follow the long-term planning of Alberta Transportation and Highway forty-three. We'll connect those, those two arterials with some major collectors within the development, and I, as mentioned earlier, a transportation walking network with, through it as well. So the, the only issue that we did run into with transportation as far as concerns from adjacent neighborhoods and whatnot is actually something that came up with the county, in that there's a, there's a current existing access coming out of Silverpoint, which we, we originally, and this was part of that delay that was, that we were talking about earlier, that Mr. Drosch mentioned, we originally had one of the major collectors coming out onto one of the arterials very close to where the Silverpoint access was. So through some negotiations with, with their management and, and some shuffling of some internal roadways, we've managed to separate the two accesses to a point where they're both safe. So that's transportation network. The, maybe one more point on transportation is, I guess, the, the trail does fall within that, that work, so the buffer between Silverpoint and, and the industrial development will be, will contain a trail. There currently is a trail within Silverpoint, but of course, this is on private property. We've kind of, in respecting the fact that that's a Silverpoint trail, essentially, we're not, as mentioned, we're not a hundred percent sure if we will construct or, or just utilize that trail as well, but that's something that will be dealt with through, through detailed engineering, so. With the water system, obviously, in, in conjunction with Aqua Terra and dealing with, through comments with them, they have expressed interest, as mentioned, in a transmission main running west of the city, so that will run along the south boundary of the property. So we've got, we've allocated that, that utility corridor, along with, again, municipal reserve to try and kind of kill, kill two birds with one stone sort of thing, and, and allocate some, some green space while still utilizing it for, for utility quarters. So, so that, that will be green. Everything where, where the utility is will obviously be a public utility lot, not, not municipal reserve, so that would be in addition to, to this. So, and in conjunction with that, there will be a berm, as mentioned earlier, this was at the request of, of Silverpoint. We, we threw around a lot of different types of buffers, be it storm ponds, berms, fences, trees, all kinds of things. So what we've come up with is this, this buffer between the two, between the two developments. One, with, with a bunch of different things there. There are some trees now between Silverpoint and the development, and we've also have, we will be installing a berm. There was some discussion of a fence on, on top of the berm. That will be, again, something that gets dealt with through detailed engineering. And we, there was also offer of, of trees within that corridor, any municipal reserve within the city does have a, a tree planting requirement, so. So lots of opportunity, lots of things discussed, and we think we've come to a conclusion that, that sort of meets everybody's needs. As far as sanitaries, this development started within the county, obviously, and several discussions were had regarding servicing of this. It's not, it's not readily serviceable through sanitary, so Aqua Terra has agreed to a low-pressure sewer system within the development, which is basically an effective way of servicing a, a development that can't currently be constructed through gravity systems, so it avoids some maintenance costs and whatnot with the city. And will be new to this, to the city of Grand Prairie in a, in a commercial industrial respect, but has been, been in practice here now for, I don't know, five to ten years, I guess, within Aqua Terra and several municipalities around as well. So, so that, that is the servicing strategy for sanitary, so ultimately, this will go to a future trunk sewer, but currently Aqua Terra has no plans to construct that at this stage. So we'll deal with that through, through, there'll be a little, a separate design completed, and, and that system will be installed with the development. The stormwater has been discussed a little bit, there is, there, there was, were some changes, and, and again, this ties back to the, the brief delays that did occur. Storm sewer originally was all centered in the west quarter. It has subsequently been split into the east and west quarters proportionally to the landowners. Tends to be an easier, easier development mechanism as far as, as minimizing delays and whatnot in development. So we do have two, two major storm facilities within the development, one in the southwest quarter of, corner of the east quarter, and two smaller facilities located on the west side of the west quarter. The discharge for, for all of this flow is, is, there's a small creek that, that currently drains the development to the west, and one of the storm ponds is actually located, and this ties into the environmental issues that have come up, is located on the west side of the west quarter, which is a, is currently somewhat forested area. So through the biophysical assessment, which is, for anyone who's not familiar, biophysical looks at any, any aquatic concerns, any environmental concerns, forestry concerns, any endangered species that may be there, as well as any aquatic impacts as far as impacts of wetlands. Alberta has a new wetland, wetland management policy that is currently in practice, and, and this... And and this biophysical basically allows us to deal with any of those approvals or identifies them, I guess is a better way to to say that at the time, early on, so that we're aware of them when we go into development and and need to proceed. So so there were no major environmental impacts raised through that report. That doesn't mean that there aren't things that are going to have to be dealt with through the development process. It means that that anything that was flagged is not is not significant enough to to save as environmental reserve. So the, for example, the the west storm pond was classified as a wetland in the biophysical, so that will be mitigated through the Water Act and and the provincial wetland framework. So that will will occur at that time. As far as, there was a question earlier from, I believe, Council McLean regarding the the visual and and buffer from from the highway. So currently, unfortunately, we don't have the answer for how far from the shoulder of the highway to to the lots are. It's it's a fair space right now as it is a is a provincial highway, so they they do have fairly large right of ways. Just looking on the air photo, I would suspect currently it's in the thirty to fifty meter range, but it does vary. There's the the right of way is not consistent along the north boundary. So with that said, there's there are provisions within that that zoning to concentrate landscaping whatnot on the high visibility corridors. So the currently, as far as what what likely will occur, zoning on the north portion of the property is actually commercial, so so it's not an industrial zoning on along the highway, which does have a little different level of landscaping as far as the zoning is considered. So I believe I've caught everything I needed to to say here. So if anyone does have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thanks very much, gentlemen. So questions for the delegation, Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. And I still don't feel comfortable with the buffer and what it is because I'm going to ask one hundred and sixteenth and how that's overlaying, especially when you bring up another area, Keston Town or whatever it's going to be called. Is there any utility right of ways there? Because a lot of times I hear, well, we're coming in from the south of the city and we can't plant any trees because there's lines there, so it's just a trail and nothing. Is there anything in the way of the city doing a trail system in front of the east side or on the north side of this west industrial park? Is there anything in front of it that you know of?
Not that I'm immediately aware of. One of the challenges is that that's still a provincial highway, so the city doesn't have jurisdiction in terms of development that could happen within that right of way, for example, for trails and so on. There have been in other situations where there have been trail connections adjacent to the major roadways through, for example, municipal reserve. But again, because the east-west trail linkage was identified by this by the city as being, in this case, best served along the south boundary of the quarter, the Parks Department did not express a need or a desire for a trail to the north. That's not to say that that couldn't happen at some point in the future, but we haven't provided for that.
My final question, but it's provincial provincial highway now, but we're getting it back. So they're going to be giving, so nice policy, but we're taking it back and putting it at the cost of a fortune. The other one is defined need. Do you think we might be lacking? Because I know where we used, Edmonton has an airport where they had a clans rugby club and soccer team. We've got all this industry going to happen around their airport. And what I was looking at here, twelve hectares, that would have been thirty acres, basically. I don't know the math on that. And we're going to get like one point two acres, and we're taking cash in lieu of today's value. You mentioned about defined need, maybe we're lacking in a defined need. Do you see it? Because we don't have nothing there. So basically, you're telling me there is nothing in protocol for the city. I know we've discussed this, really, we have nothing on policy or anything, is what I'm hearing.
So Counselor McLean, I guess I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Well, we're hearing.
You're asking the consultants for their opinion.
Well, we're, no, okay, I've asked them directly because they've been in front of us numerous occasions, these individuals for their companies, that industrial areas, we don't see no defined need. So that's what I'm hearing from Dave and Scott. There's no defined need within the city right now, from hearing from you two.
And and again, Counselor McLean, when we talk about defined need, we basically, when we're putting these plans together, we do it under, basically under the direction and and so on, and policy that's presented to us from administration. And in this case, as in other previous cases, the city's Parks Department has not defined a specific need in this area, perhaps with a future recreation master plan or something that could potentially be shown. But in the absence of that, that's what we have to go on. If the if the city had said, for example, we need X acres for a, like, you know, soccer pitches or something like that, we would certainly have addressed that. But if the city administration aren't identifying these needs to us, we have to assume that the needs, that it's not a defined need. So that was the context.
Thanks, Mr. Craig. Any other questions for the delegation? I have one that's maybe slightly related. I I think I understood you to say that the city is taking, the MR that the city is taking is adjacent to a PUL, a public utility lot that will have the Aqua Terra trunk main. And so does the area that 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 will ultimately be open space above the PUL, it isn't counted as MR? And so the the combination of the, like, what is the ratio of the area that's covered by MR versus the area that's covered by PUL, roughly speaking? Is it a?
It it's roughly, probably two thirds, one third. If it's a minimum ten, I believe Aqua Terra requires six meters for their for their water line. So that would be augmented with four meters of corridor width that would be MR. So it would be roughly, I guess, yeah, sixty, forty.
So although.
PUL and MR.
So although the city's MR area is that sort of forty percent, there's another sixty percent that's coming because it's adjacent to the PUL in terms of what what people would see on the ground.
There are, so as far as, I don't know the exact number in the outline plan, the the one point, whatever acres that was identified in there, the the additional land that's not included in the MR calculation would, yes, would be about a thirty percent increase to go to a ten, ten meter PUL along the south boundary. Plus, in addition to that, the storm ponds are dry, so they will be very similar. So examples of dry storm ponds within the city of Grand Prairie are the Royal Oaks Storm Pond, the Northridge Storm Pond, which currently has a playground in the bottom of it, the the Mission Heights Storm Pond. So so there will be a lot of green space within this plan. If you look at the development plan that that has been presented, the, we show, we show storm ponds on plans generally as blue, they'll actually be grass. So the there are some recreational opportunities there should someone decide they want to utilize that area and and as well, all the land around the storm pond there, we do have some of a buffer around the the storm facilities that adjacent to the lots that's available as well. It's just not identified as a municipal reserve. So the the there wouldn't be opportunity within that for playgrounds, skating rinks, things like that.
Sure. Thank you. Any other questions for the delegation? I don't see anybody else in the queue. Okay, I think that's it. Thanks very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
For the presentation, thanks for answering some questions for us. This is still the presentation submission portion of this public hearing related to the airport industrial outline plan, the associated west industrial area structure plan. Was there anybody else who wished to speak to the to these two plans? Anybody else that wished to come forward to speak to these two plans? Okay, then I'll give one last opportunity for council with any questions to administration. Once I close the public hearing, we'll move on to business arising. That'd be time for discussion and debate, but this would be the last opportunity for questions for administration. Counselor McLean?
Take this one. Thank you, Mayor Given. Just directed to administration, I'm hearing to ask the question, delegation came up, defined needs. I know it was spoken up at different council meetings over the last year about this area and and area structure plan, and I find maybe that kind of, we didn't have a motion or maybe we're lacking defined needs of areas that could be implemented around the airport. We're finding like, what I'm seeing in industrial, my question is, what I'm seeing what from administration is most industrial areas, you're just taking cash and very little land. Am I correct?
Mr. Durosh?
Yes, through the mayor. In my experience in industrial areas, we generally take cash in lieu rather than land. It's very difficult to find a viable use for this land simply because there's nothing in our recreation policy designating uses for these areas. We typically work with parks to try and find a potential use, and we had numerous meetings with parks on this occasion and discussed a few possible concepts, but didn't find anything viable. So in order to justify taking lands, we need to be able to answer why we need it. We were able to negotiate a trail which we find helped meet a recreational need and create a greater connection. And luckily, we were able to accommodate that largely on a public utility lane, which means that we saved the MR and gained more cash in lieu in the future, which will help fund additional facilities.
So my final one, closing. So I'm hearing a lot of parks locally, administration and parks in the city of Grand Prairie. Doesn't seem like we're reaching out, like, say, the city of St. Albert Soccer Rugby Field and Industrial Area, Edmonton and Industrial Area have major fields. So I'm hearing that we talked to parks and we have no idea, but trails, we don't have it, so everything else is. What I'm hearing is, if it ain't a trail, it doesn't fit within parks right now. There's no defined plan for.
Yeah, Counselor McLean, I guess you're asking for administration to give an interpretation. I thought.
I'm hearing just parks, all I'm hearing.
Well, so our parks department are the ones that do the city's requirements around open space plans. I think I heard administration say they consulted with the appropriate department. The appropriate department didn't have an identified need for any space, and there weren't any city documents, like a recreation master plan that identified specific uses. And so subject to, because of that, administration worked with the development and the the landowners to identify things that did make sense, like an east-west trail corridor. But so I I'm not sure of your question.
So I guess basically that would be up to council, maybe down the road, not administration, that if we see an area lacking now, that we're going to have to start bringing it up more.
Yeah, I I think that's exactly right, Counselor McLean. Ultimately, that would be a policy level decision. You know, and if council wanted to, for example, in a in a recreation master plan type document, identify that the city will locate its major recreation facilities or future recreation facilities in industrial areas, that'd be a policy level decision that council could take that would influence the information that administration and all departments would work from. Counselor Thieson?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. This is actually just a question for Director Anderson, if possible. In regards to the cash in lieu on municipal reserves, do we have a specific line in our budget that that would inform council that, hey, this is it?
Mr. Anderson?
Well, Mayor Given, we do have a reserve. It's a statutory reserve, so it is listed. We have that information available, and it would be flowed through to a capital project that council would approve.
Thank you. Counselor Thieson? I don't see any other questions for administration. That being the case, then I will close the public hearing. We move on to business arising, and I would look for some motions as listed in our report. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give first reading to bylaw C thirteen twenty-nine being the west industrial area structure plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. No discussion or debate on first reading. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council give second reading to bylaw C thirteen twenty-nine.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So this is a motion for second reading for the west industrial area structure plan. This motion is open for discussion and debate. Anyone care to ring in with any discussion or debate with respect to this area structure plan? I don't see anybody in the queue, so I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C thirteen twenty-nine being the west industrial ASP at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So this is a motion to have third and final reading here at our council meeting this evening. In order for this motion to pass, it must pass unanimously. We can't have discussion or debate with respect to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight or at some other time, or sorry, at our subsequent council meeting. Is there any discussion or debate? I don't see anybody in the queue. I would just encourage my council colleagues to support this motion. It is really a matter of of timing. This, if there is ultimately support for the ASP, we can either do that here tonight and have our staff here in attendance at this meeting, or we can require our staff to show up at another meeting that we're going to be paying them for just to make a point. And so I would encourage council to raise their objections on the matters of the ASP if they have concerns, but I would encourage council to support having that third and final reading here tonight. I don't see anybody else in the queue, so I will call for the vote on having third and final reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry, and so our third and final reading will come back at a subsequent council meeting. Counselor Radburn, did you care to carry on with those other?
Certainly. Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council give first reading to bylaw C thirteen twenty-two being the airport industrial outline plan.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So motion for first reading. There is no discussion or debate on first reading. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Sure. Counselor Rice has a point of order. Counselor Rice?
Isn't the outline plan, doesn't it need bylaw one three two nine to be passed before the outline plan can be amended? Isn't that?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. That may be, and Legislative Services may be able to weigh in on this, but my suggestion would be that, given the fate of the ASP third reading vote, it might be prudent to get the OP to that same stage so that when the next meeting takes place, then it can all go through at once.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Thanks, Counselor Rice. So we'll go back to Counselor Radburn's motion for first reading. I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn? You'll just have to get your microphone there. We'll take you out of the queue.
I'd move council give second reading to bylaw C thirteen twenty-two.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Motion for second reading on the airport industrial outline plan. Any discussion or debate in that second reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move that council have third reading for bylaw C thirteen twenty-two being the airport industrial OP at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. So as with our previous piece of business with respect to the west industrial area structure plan, this is a motion to have third and final reading here. It must pass unanimously. Otherwise, it would come back at our subsequent council meeting. As we heard from administration, it may make sense to have these two items move in concert. Is there any other discussion or debate with respect to the merits of having third and final reading here tonight? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion does not carry, and so this will come back at our subsequent council meeting along with the west industrial area structure plan. We'll move on to item seven point two, our second public hearing of the night. This is a public hearing with respect to planning and development fees and charges review and the new fees and charges bylaw. I call this public hearing to order and look to administration for an introduction. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Yes, this is a presentation outlining two bylaws. One is a new bylaw, the Planning and Development and Engineering Services Fees and Charges bylaw, as well as an associated amendment to the Land Use bylaw. The recommendations are that council adopt bylaw C thirteen twenty-five, which is the fees and charges bylaw, and C twelve sixty dash sixty-nine, which is an amendment to the Land Use bylaw. Previous council committee directions include adoption of the previous Land Use bylaw in two thousand and nine, which included a minor adjustment to development fees, but the planning and development, or the planning related fleet fees have remained unchanged since approximately two thousand and three. At the October fourth, two thousand and sixteen Community Growth Committee meeting, committee directed administration to incorporate the concept of doubling fines for unauthorized or inconsistent development. At the March twenty-first, two thousand and seventeen Community Growth Committee, committee referred the proposed fees and charges bylaw back to administration for consideration of comments that were presented at that meeting. I'll get into that in more detail later on. And at the April eighteenth meeting, Community Growth Committee meeting, committee directed administration to move forward to council with the draft Planning and Development Fees and Charges bylaw with the proposed phase in plan incorporated into it, which I will also get into. So the the primary focus of this review has been to increase the fees of planning applications and planning applications. And planning applications include the adoption of area structure plans and outline plans, as well as amendments to all four levels of our statutory plans, which include the Municipal Development Plan, Area Structure Plan, Outline Plan, and Land Use Bylaw. The proposed fees and charges bylaw also includes modest increases to development fees, variances, discretionary uses, some signs, and municipal compliances. We are proposing to remove the fee schedule from the Land Use Bylaw, which is part of creating a separate Fees and Charges Bylaw. And the piece regarding doubling fees, uh, as per CGC's direction is incorporated into the draft bylaw. So, uh, the question of why increase the fees may come up. Planning applications are very time intensive, involving numerous departments, including planning and development, who process the application, draft the bylaws, negotiate with the applicants, involve other departments, coordinate the entire process, uh, and so on. Engineering Services does a lot of heavy lifting as well. They review design reports. Uh, they also work with the applicants in negotiating a number of the details. Legislative Services works with us to draft and review the bylaws, upload reports to sire, coordinate the meetings and whatnot. GIS is involved with making maps quite often. And numerous other departments are circulated for comments, and depending on the nature of their comments, may be dragged into, uh, negotiations. As part of this review, we compared ourselves with several other municipalities in Alberta. We found that our current fees are amongst the lowest. Our originally proposed fees, which were presented to CGC in March, were sliced slightly less than the average of what we found. The original proposal is shown on the screen here. So the existing is the blue column, the average is the yellow, and the original proposal was, is shown in green. The idea of a new Fees and Charges Bylaw, uh, has a lot of merit from administration's perspective. We removed the fees from the Land Use Bylaw, create a new bylaw as noted. And the title is Planning and Development and Engineering Services. And we are doing that because when, when we have a separate Fees and Charges Bylaw, we, a public hearing is not required, so it saves advertising. Of course, any changes that we do propose, we would engage, uh, stakeholders. But actually placing the ads in the newspaper may save upwards of a thousand dollars anytime we propose to change it. The engineering fees are currently contained in the Land Use Bylaw, and that might not be the most appropriate place for those fees. And it sets the stage if the city ever decided to, uh, uh, draft a comprehensive Fees and Charges Bylaw, as opposed to having numerous departments having their own separate Fees and Charges Bylaw, which is certainly a, a common practice. And the, the bylaw contains a regular review clause, which will, uh, require administration to report to council and, or committee and council on an annual basis. That's not to say that we're going, going to propose increases, but we might just stop in and say, we think that everything is fine, and we recommend just maintaining the schedule. We reached out to numerous stakeholders, including the Home Builders Association, Urban Development Institute, Grand Prairie and Area Association of Realtors, and numerous law firms, as well as regular clients. The only stakeholder group that really had any comments back to us was the Urban Development Institute. And UDI's position is that they objected to the fees for amendments. And in one of the preliminary meetings that we had, they said, well, if your chart, a, a lot of these projects require amendments to numerous levels of the plans, so an area structure plan, an outline plan, and a rezoning. And so the price, the new prices of all three of those will add up quite, to be quite a significant sum. And at that meeting, we realized that, yes, when there are numerous applications, um, there are some efficiencies that administration sees in that we're simply reviewing one issue. The fact that there's numerous plans that are affected, uh, is somewhat irrelevant, uh, short of having to create the bylaws or the maps or whatever with, with those, uh, plans. So we, we tried to capture the efficiencies that we would see when there is, uh, a package amendment, so to speak. And our response was that, um, when there are more than one plan, it, when there is one, more than one plan involved in an application, then, then we have a reduced fee for the subsequent applications. And we also acknowledged that there will be efficiencies with advertising, so we created a, a clause with, that captures that as well. And so just to see that in action, the, uh, the proposed fee schedule, um, uh, the application fee for the area structure plan would be 4,000, and then the OP would be cut in half, the LUB would be cut in half with a subtotal of 8,000. And then the advertising fee would max out at 1,000 for a total of 9,000, which was a significant reduction of what was originally proposed. And we felt that that adequately addressed UDI's concerns. I'm sorry. And furthermore, they requested that the amendment fees, if changed, are phased in over four years. So at the March 21st CGC meeting, UDI presented their concerns. The committee discussed options to address UDI's concerns. And overall, the focus of committee's discussion was to reduce fees for amendment applications. They, uh, committee ultimately passed the motion that we refer it back to administration to try and make some sense of the comments that were presented and, and come back with a suggestion or a new recommendation. Administration went back and reviewed the proposed amendment fees based on discussion at that meeting. And we considered the average staff time required for an application, the department revenue versus expenditures, exploring opportunities to create efficiencies with processing applications, remaining competitive with other municipalities, as well as council strategic priorities. And ultimately where we landed was that the proposed fees were reasonable. It wasn't that the proposed fees were, uh, ridiculously high. It was that our original and current fees are ridiculously low. So we, we, uh, took the position that the concerns are based on the magnitude of the change. And sticker shock is a good, uh, saying to capture that. And reducing the proposed fees any further would have an impact on how much the department relies on general revenue to cover its expenditures. So to build a little bit on the sticker shock phenomenon, we, uh, we went back to one of UDI's requests was, which was that they, the fees be phased in. And what we suggest is that, uh, the initial adoption of the Fees and Charges Bylaw does include an increase to the fees, but not to the full extent of what was originally proposed. Uh, that the fees increase incrementally on January 1 of 2018 and ultimately reach our original proposal at January 1 of 2019. And the amendment fees would continue to be eligible for the package pricing provision, which I discussed earlier. So this is a, a summary of the proposed phase in approach. Uh, the, uh, existing, I'll just, we'll just go on the MDP line. I won't go through it all line by line, but the existing is 2,000 for an MDP amendment. Effective immediately would go to three, January 1, 2018, it would go to 3,500. And then January 1, 2019, it would go to the 4,000, the 4,000 being what was originally proposed. So at the conclusion of the April 18th Community Growth Committee meeting, the, the motion was passed that that draft, or the, the phase in plan be incorporated into the draft Planning and Development and Engineering Services Fees and Charges Bylaw and presented to council tonight. We've done that. The draft bylaw that's part of this package includes that, uh, shown above, May 15th, 2017. Those fees apply, January 1, the next column, January 1, 2019, the next column. And the recommendations are that council adopt bylaw C 1325 being a new bylaw, uh, with the Planning and Development and Engineering Services Fees and Charges, and adopt bylaw C 1260-69, which is an amendment to the Land Use Bylaw, removing the current fee schedule. And I'm open to any questions and comments that, uh, council may have.
Thanks very much, Mr. Johnson. Uh, are there any questions for administration at this point? Counselor McLean?
Thanks, Mayor Given. Just a quick question. Joe, uh, I think it was done very well by administration for the fees and looking at, but how do we get so out of whack 14 years? Do we have, uh, to review policy like in five or seven years? A lot of building happens 14 years. And then some of these numbers, like different communities were quite higher and some were closer, but there was really a difference in quite a bit of numbers. And, um, like, are we going to wait another 14 years? Or do we have anything in place internally to say, we got to look at these now in six years or five years instead of 14?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Currently, we do not have anything in place. Uh, certainly it is good practice to regularly review your fees and charges. The new proposed bylaw does include a clause that we are to report back. So that's, uh, it was drafted to capture that and, and make sure that, uh, that this, this will not be revisited in 14 years.
Thank you.
Counselor Rice?
So the, uh, the concerns of UDI to, uh, spread the increases over a two-year incremental increase, does the bylaw as it's drafted now meet their concerns? I realize they're never going to be happy, but does it, uh, uh, does it reflect that we listen to their concerns?
Mr. Johnson?
I believe it, uh, thank you, Mayor Given. I believe it does show, uh, an element of cooperation and, and, um, addressing their concerns. To be fair to them, at the April Community Growth Committee meeting, they mentioned that their preference would be no increases at all. And that if there were increases, that they be phased in over a four-year period. And so we are meeting them a little bit more, more than halfway by saying two and a half.
Thanks, Mr. Johnson. Uh, Counsel Tarrant?
Mayor Given, Joe, can you talk to the, um, I'm just curious about the overall development and planning department's, uh, budget in terms of, uh, what is the cost recovery ratio as a whole?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Uh, unfortunately, I, I'm ill-prepared in that regard. I, I would have had it at the April meeting, and I was remiss in preparing that for this evening. Um, however, the services that the, the Planning and Development Department, uh, provides are basically broken into two categories, planning applications, which is the, the focus of this review, as well as development permit, um, uh, fees. Now, cost recovery for planning is a little different than development permitting, because development permitting, the primary objective of having our development officer team is to issue permits. And we do a much better job of being cost recovery on that side. However, the planning side of things, we do a lot of things for, for council just in terms of council, council special projects, um, uh, general housekeeping. And then applications, um, are, you know, certainly a, a function, but, uh, they might not be classified as our primary function. And so, uh, certainly the department is subsidized, uh, in that regard. And there, and I, if I were to be put on the spot as far as, uh, what, what the planning, uh, application fees do for a cost recovery perspective on the planning side of our department, I would guess somewhere in the neighborhood of about, uh, 15%.
Uh, Counsel Thieson? No, sorry, Counsel Tarrant, go ahead.
Uh, and, and is there a, a goal that, do you want to see a cost recovery ratio of X amount? Has that been discussed?
Mr. Johnson?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. At this point, uh, we, we acknowledge that cost recovery to, to charge an application fee what it would, um, hmm. At this point, we have not discussed targets, to answer your question.
Counselor Thieson?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Uh, thank you, Joe, for your presentation and for the hard work, uh, the planning department's put in, uh, and the concessions made. I think, uh, for me, it's nice, and for the most part, it meets right in the middle of everywhere. Um, the question, I had a couple of questions. First one is, uh, when you're discussing fees and charges, uh, did we draw any comparison to the county of Grand Prairie? I know we did other mid-sized cities, but, uh, um, here in this market, like, obviously our comparable is our neighbor. Um, so how, how are we doing in comparison to them?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you mu- very much, Mayor Given. Um, it depends how, how, how you mean, how are we doing? Uh, their, their fees are significantly higher. They have a flat rate of $10,000 for any one of those major applications, amendment applications included. Um, now, to be fair, uh, their development permit fees are slightly less than ours, so there's a bit of a, a compromise in that regard. Um, however, yeah, they, they do have very significant fees. And, um, some comments that UDI made at the previous committee meetings is that, um, they, they show perhaps some more flexibility of what would necessitate an amendment to an application.
Okay, no, that's, that's suitable answer for me. Uh, the other question that I had is actually in regards to, uh, sign permits and variances. Um, uh, we just undertook a, an extensive review of our, of our signed bylaw, and, uh, I'm almost certain, maybe I'm wrong, that fees and, were, were put in that and charges and amendments were, were included in that review. Uh, so that would predate it about two years ago, not 14 years ago. So my question is, uh, I actually have two questions around signs. So the first question is, is what was the impetus for us to raise the fees on signs? After we'd undertaken this review and established at some point, this is okay for now? And the second one is, uh, the variance on the signs. I, I was wondering if that might even be a typo. It says variance in excess of 1%. And I believe our old standard was like 10%. So this is pretty much any variance on a sign, and, uh, you're going to get ding $600. So could you explain the justifications for those, please?
Mr. Johnson?
Certainly, thank you, Mayor Given. Okay, so to divide the two issues, the, I'll start with the signs. The sign bylaw review was more about the standards of, of signs. And I don't believe we touched the prices. And if we did, we may have filled a, a hole where there was a, a hole in our fee schedule before. And so if a certain sign definition was introduced or something, we may have put something in there. But my recollection is that we actually didn't touch the fee side of signs. It was just about standards. The, the piece about the variance is a little bit of a long, complicated story, so I'll try and keep it very simple. Uh, the, the previous fees, or the current fee schedule does say in excess of 10%, uh, then the fees apply. However, the Land Use Bylaw does not excuse us from doing all of the work that is required for variances less than 10%. So we, we viewed it as a contradiction, and in those instances, we were actually losing money. So we are charging, uh, based on the work that is triggered. And anything above 1% is where work is triggered in terms of notifying adjacents, placing an advertisement in the newspaper, signs on the property, potentially reporting to Community Growth Committee, depending on the nature of the, the variance and to what standard. And so, uh, that, that piece was thought out, and it, it does make sense the way that it is proposed.
So. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Johnson. So how frequently do we have signs that come in that are, at a variance of, uh, greater than 10%?
Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, well, first off, I believe you might be, uh, clouding those two issues, the signs as well as the variances, because the variances piece is for any variance. It's not just signs. Uh, to answer your specific question about how often we see variances to signs, I, I really, I, I couldn't, uh, provide you with any information on that one there. I mean, variances are quite common. Variances in excess of 1% to signs is quite a specific question. I'm, I'm not really sure about that.
Okay, yeah, I'm okay for now. Okay, thanks, Counsel Thieson. Counsel Tarrant?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a question, a follow-up, Counsel Thieson's in regards to the county. Um, on the comparison chart here, it shows that they don't have any fees for outline plan adoption or amendments. It just says NA, is that so they don't, just don't charge anything? Or is that just not, information not available?
Johnson?
Thank you, Mayor Given. The county has a slightly different legislative framework than the city. They, they do not have outline plans. Their area structure plans are sort of both documented. documents in one. Historically, the city has always had area structure plans, and then the developers provide the outline plans. It just works a little differently in the county. And so their equivalent to an outline plan is an area structure plan.
So I guess you would say that roughly between, if you added up our outline plan and our ASP numbers, it would be slightly more than the counties if you look at it on a comparative basis?
Mr. Johnson.
I believe even if we charged for both the area structure plan and the outline plan with the fees proposed for January 1 of 2019, i.e. the full cost or full charge plus the package pricing provision, if you will, we would be, if there was an amendment that triggered an area structure plan and an outline plan amendment, then the application would total approximately $6,000, and that's for two, whereas the county would charge 10 for the area structure plan alone. So we would be less.
But if there was two new, an application for new ASP and a new outline plan, it would be, and again, looking at the numbers when it's fully implemented, it would be 5,000 plus the 6,400. So you're looking at 11,400. Is that correct?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm not 100% following here. There's one anomaly I'd like to point out, is the 10,000 for the county is an amendment to an area structure plan. Off the top of my head, I don't have their fee for a new area structure plan.
Based, I'm just basing on the chart. It says new ASP for the county is 10,000. Ours would be 5,000, plus then for an outline plan adoption would be 6,400.
Counselor Tarrant, is there, are you going from the bylaw itself, or are you going for, yeah, from the chart? It may help Ms. Johnson by referencing what document you're...
I'm looking at the chart that's provided with comparator cities.
Is that the green, yellow, white? Anything further, Counselor Tarrant? Counselor Clayton.
Mayor Given, question to administration. Mr. Johnson, can you tell me in your opinion, rather than in your opinion, maybe can you tell me the approach administration took in regards to these prices? I can appreciate the fact that you say that they're average prices across the province. However, in my mind, we should never want to be just average. We should want to be a leader in industry. And so I'm curious of why the approach to sort of be in the middle and consider that a good place to be, as opposed to being a leader to possibly at the lowest end of things, but still possibly be above the rates that they were at, increased potential opportunity of investment and development in our city.
Mr. Johnson. As noted in the presentation, we did do an analysis from all different angles, and one of them was a staff time required to process an application. And just considering the costs of staff time alone, we figure that we're maybe approaching cost recovery on an application. And that's just staff time alone, not within the Planning and Development Department, not numerous other departments, and not including resources required to process the applications and whatnot. So we did some analysis in that regard. And with respect to being a leader amongst other municipalities and whatnot, we did try and balance, you know, remaining competitive and whatnot, but also respecting council's strategic directions to be fiscally responsible and certainly respecting the idea of user pay to an extent. Again, we're not aiming to be cost recovery, because if we did that, the proposed fees would be significantly higher. So it is all about a balance, and I think that we've achieved that quite well. And again, I would suggest that our current fees are very, very low, and the proposed fees are entirely reasonable in that regard. If we had stayed on top of this over the years, I think we would perhaps be at an even higher spot than we are right now. And I don't think that there would be much objection from industry because they would be used to what we're doing. And unfortunately, the sticker shock is the piece that's a bit of a problem. With respect to encouraging development and redevelopment, we're always keen to meet with applicants prior to them formally submitting an application. And, you know, in the spirit of keeping good relations, we will give them an indication if we're likely to support an application or not. And so they have a very good idea getting into an application if there's the likelihood that admin will support it or not. Not to say that that makes or breaks the deal, because ultimately, council approves the bylaws. And should they decide to submit an application, we promise them that we will get them through the process as best as possible regardless of our position. And for the most part, I think that our approach has been well-received by industry in that regard, so.
Okay, thanks, Mr. Johnson. Are there any other questions for administration at this point? Because we are still in a public hearing, and I want to make certain that we get an opportunity to get to the presentation submission portion. Any questions for administration? Counselor Clayton?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Just a follow-up question. Mr. Johnson, can you tell me the municipalities that are at the low end of the pricing, in your opinion, have their councils taken an initiative to lose money on those applications? Why are they lower than us?
Mr. Johnson, is that something you can answer?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I can't answer it for certain, but one thing I will note is that, like the county of Grand Prairie, their development fees may be significantly higher, and so they have lower planning fees. Hard to say.
Okay, thank you. I don't see anybody else in the queue, and so we'll open the presentation submission portion of the public hearing. Is there anybody that's here to speak to the planning and development fees and charges review and the new fees and charges bylaw? Is anybody here to speak to this subject? I don't see anybody coming forward. I'll just ask one last time. Is there anybody that wishes to speak to this subject? Seeing no one, then I will close the presentation submission portion of the public hearing and close the public hearing, and we'll move on to business arising. Would look for a motion to introduce the topic. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move the, give first reading to bylaw C-1325 being the planning, development, and engineering services fees and charges bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So a motion for first reading. As with all first readings, no discussion or debate. I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'm going to give second reading to bylaw C-1325.
Hey, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Open for discussion and debate. Counselor Tarrant.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I will be voting against the motion. I think my positions have been fairly consistent as with other fee increases that have been proposed through other times and other departments. What I feel needs to happen is that there needs to be a sort of philosophical review of what our cost recovery goal is for each department. I think we really need to know, you know, council needs to have that discussion, and it does have, take place from time to time, mostly in recreation, where we look at, you know, how much we want to subsidize a certain department, and then how much, you know, and then we direct the fees accordingly. I just, you know, I think our fees are, you know, fairly low, and I think there needs to be some increase. But I think there needs to be a better justification for exactly what those are. And, you know, I think a cost recovery ratio is one way to look at it. But have that discussion, you know, in terms of whether council would want to subsidize further. Is this an area that we want to really invest in, or is this something we want to even move closer to full cost recovery? And at this point, I just don't feel comfortable with the, you know, the work that was done to get to this, these numbers, and so I will not be supporting the motion.
Thanks, Counselor Tarrant. Counselor Rice?
I too will not be supporting the motion. I would, I really like what Counselor Tarrant had to say. And also, if we were to proceed with the motion, I guess I would like the fee increases to start in six months, and then a year, and a year gives people time to prepare. I think that, you know, any businessman will tell you that mostly it creates an uncomfortable situation for them if they're raised like tomorrow morning.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. Any other discussion or debate? Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Earlier this week, I had my ear bent by one of the businessmen in the city, and he had concerns about the pricing in the county versus the price of the city, and how we're supposed to be promoting business and supporting our businesses. And I was really felt that the pricing that I thought was a bit of a jump, but then again, Counselor Clayton had made some points tonight that seemed to be pretty interesting, and I don't think I'll be supporting the motion either.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. I don't see anybody else. Thank you, so I'll just take my opportunity. I would encourage council to support the motion. The way that I view this issue is really influenced by the fact that administration led an extensive consultative process with industry over the course of many, many months. This is not something that's springing up out of nowhere. Absolutely, industry is informed. There is a level of negotiation that council supported with respect to the phase-in and the package pricing. Those were both things that were brought in as a variance from administration's initial recommendation. And I think that demonstrates that council heard the concerns of industry. And I think it's important, for me, another area that is important to remember is scale. We're talking about costs in the thousands of dollars when the preparation of these plans is in the tens of thousands, literally in the tens of thousands of dollars, and ultimately, proceeding with development is in the millions of dollars. And so in the scheme of things with respect to land development, these expenses in many cases are a very small portion of the ultimate cost of doing development in the area. And the final thing that influences my perspective on this issue is really about property taxes. In the end, we have some decisions to make about where we want to put the burden of new development, and whether that's a user-pay basis where new development and those who benefit and profit from new development pay the cost of that new development, or whether property taxes in existing areas of our city subsidize profits in the private sector. That's what we're talking about. This isn't recreation where we say there's a good community benefit to health and wellness, and we want to ensure youth stay active, and there's a good social benefit, and that's why we subsidize this. This is a profit center, and we have a choice about how much we want to subsidize private profits. And I have heard from Grand Prairie residents that they're concerned about our level of property taxes with respect to other cities across the province. Other cities have higher fees and charges for development, and they have lower property taxes. I absolutely don't believe that this is a one-to-one thing that will magically change our ratio, but this is the kind of step that council needs to take to ensure we're directing costs as much as possible to the users of a service and those who benefit from it, and away from subsidizing it through property taxes. So I would strongly encourage council to consider those factors. The user-pay approach, the scale of these costs with respect to private development, and really, who should ultimately carry the burden of these costs? Should it be those that benefit financially from it, or should it be the general taxpayer of the city of Grand Prairie? I see Counselor Thiessen.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Here, here, I totally heard your comments, and I'm in complete agreeance with you, and I couldn't have said it better myself. I did have some concerns coming in here. Ultimately, tonight, I was going to vote yes. One of the things that does bother me or that sort of cleared up is the 1% variance. I think that's, hey, we're going to work, so we're going to trigger to work, and we'll see how that goes. And the other portion of it is in regards to signs and pretty much every digital billboard. And I'm not a fan of digital billboards either, but every digital billboard that come in comes at an additional cost. What I really liked about the proposed fees and schedule changes is that we have the opportunity to bring it forward to council and to committee and to review it annually and see if it's working. We can balance our budget. We can see if we have complaints later on down the road. And if we want, ultimately, we can change it. So for all those reasons, tonight, I'm going to support the hard work of our administration and the upgrade of our fees.
Okay, thanks, Counselor Thiessen. I see Counselor Rice.
I'd like to make an amendment if I could.
Ken, certainly, Counselor Rice.
I would like to move that the implementation follow January 1, 2018, then January 1, 2019, and then 2020.
Thanks, Counselor Rice. That motion is in order. We can have discussion or debate on Counselor Rice's motion with respect to the implementation timeline. Any discussion or debate on that motion? Mr. Counselor O'Toole in the queue, you were in there before the amendment was made, though, so. Any discussion or debate with respect to the amendment? I don't see anybody in the queue. I'll say that I won't be supporting the amendment. Again, I believe that this is an appropriate approach, considering that our fees and charges have been static for such a significantly long period of time. I think there's a useful negotiation that happened, and there's already a implementation, phased-in implementation approach that's being proposed by administration in the original motion. Counselor Rice, do you wish to close?
Well, the fact that we were lax in increasing the fees, I believe should not be reflected on the decisions we make. It would mean making a bad decision after a bad decision.
Counselor Rice to close. We'll call for the vote on Counselor Rice's motion of amendment with respect to the implementation to essentially set it for January 1 of each of the following three years. Please vote. Thank you. That motion does not carry. So we're back to the original motion for second reading. Is there any further discussion or debate on second reading? Counselor O'Toole, you were in the queue there before we went to that amendment.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I should have probably asked administration this. I don't think I can now, but for future, I would have liked to have seen the list of pricing split up into different areas. So example, residential development permit, there's a number of issues there that are prices, and then down commercial, rather than one big package deal in the future.
Okay, thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
Yeah, I guess one of the concerns in terms of the fees is that it includes everything from big development, where you talked in the thousands and thousands, to sign permits, which, you know, that's not in the thousands and thousands. And so it's, I think you're onto something in terms of having them split. That's my concern.
Yeah, thanks, Counselor Rice. Any further discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see anyone else in the queue, so we will call for the vote on Counselor McLean's motion for second reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean? You'll just have to turn your microphone on there.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move to have third reading for bylaw C-1325 at this meeting.
Okay, thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So as with previous...
So as with, uh, previous, uh, motions like this, this is a motion to have third and final reading. It must pass unanimously for that third and final reading to happen here tonight. Is there any discussion or debate with respect to the merits of having third and final reading? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Uh, that motion does not carry and so this will come back at our subsequent council meeting. Uh, we do have, um, associated amendments to the land use bylaw. Counselor Tarrant?
Not that I think it would, uh, change the vote, but I, I did miss vote on that last one. My apologies.
Okay. So, um, we will record Counselor Tarrant as in favor. Counselor Tarrant, was that correct? Okay. So Counselor Tarrant was in favor. There's still one, one opposed, uh, and so this will come back at a subsequent council meeting. Um, uh, so we, uh, also have the land use bylaw amendments that are associated to this. Um, some of the fees and charges were contained in land use bylaw and so amendments obviously would be need, need to be made to the land use bylaw. Um, can we get first reading for that? Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move to give first reading to Bylaw C dash 1260 dash 69 being an amendment to the land use bylaw.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Uh, no discussion or debate on first reading. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move to give second reading to Bylaw C dash 1260 dash 69.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. Any discussion or debate on second reading? I don't see anybody in the queue. Uh, please vote. That motion carries. Counselor McLean?
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move to have third reading for Bylaw C dash 1260 dash 69 at this meeting.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So, uh, as with the previous, this is a motion to have third and final reading here tonight. Um, is there any discussion or debate, uh, as to the merits of having third and final reading tonight? Uh, I just want to maybe look up at administration, uh, to see if this is similar to our previous one where these two amendments, uh, essentially go hand in hand and so likely makes sense to have it come back at the subsequent council meeting as well. Okay? Um, we'll call for the vote on having third and final reading. Please vote. That motion does not carry and so this will also come back at our subsequent council meeting. Uh, I think that handles all of our, uh, public hearing business. Counselor O'Toole, did you have some business arising?
Mayor Given, I was wondering if I could make a motion to next time this fees and services come up for planning development to split it into different categories? Is that, uh, something that we can do tonight or?
I think maybe we'd want to talk to administration about that because the next time it comes up is going to be next council meeting. Um, based on what we just decided tonight, uh, you may want to discuss sort of the, the layout of the fees and charges bylaw into different sections of the administration for any future revisions.
Fair enough.
So maybe I would just, I would just recommend you talk to the Community Growth Director or Mr. Johnson about, about your concern there or the city manager. Counselor Rice?
I wonder about, um, is the next council meeting going to be delayed if there's a number of us at FCM?
Uh, I don't know the answer to that. Um, based on our, based on council's decision not to pass third and final reading tonight, all of these public hearing items will come back whenever we have our next council meeting. And that's just how it works. So, that's, that's the procedure, uh, laid out in our procedure bylaws, as I understand it. Counselor Thiessen?
Uh, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Just, uh, just a point of interest. It's, uh, May 29th, so, uh, I think there's plenty of days before, uh, that would, is when our next council meeting is scheduled. So I'm not sure who's going a week ahead of time or four days, but, uh, I think we should all be able to be here for that one.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Thanks, Counselor Rice. No tool. Uh, so we'll move on, uh, out of our public hearing section. Uh, we're into reports and we had our additional item, uh, with respect to an appointment to the subdivision and development appeal board, item 8.1. And do I have a council member prepared to make that motion, um, for an appointment to our subdivision and development appeal board? I would ask, uh, council members to, uh, find their information so that we could do that. Counselor Rice?
I would move that Richard Newfeld be appointed to the subdivision appeal board. Uh, is that all the motion here?
Uh, do we have, I'm just looking at our legislative services manager and do we have a, a, uh, a effective date and/or a timeframe?
Effective immediately for one year.
Elaine?
So, we will be, uh, appointing Mr. Richard Newfeld as an alternate member to the subdivision and development appeal board for the subdivision and development appeal board hearing 2017 dash 003D being the recycling depot appeal hearing.
Okay, that's what I said.
Yeah, that's what I thought I heard you say. Uh, the only time that we've ever had to be so specific in a public member appointment, but thanks very much, Counselor Rice, for stepping in, uh, to make that motion. Uh, any discussion or debate with respect to this? Seeing none, I will call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Uh, and that'll take us into committee business and we'll start with item 9.1, the pursuit of excellence committee meeting from April 27th. Counselor O'Toole, I think that was your set of minutes.
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. I, uh, move that council approve the minutes of the pursuit of excellent committee meeting held Thursday, April 27th as presented.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Any errors or omissions we need to correct? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. Any highlights you'd like to share from that meeting, Counselor?
Yes, I have a number of highlights. Uh, we gave, uh, we gave grants of funding to athlete travel funding, uh, athlete development and clinist, clinic hosting. And at the end of the meeting, we had a, uh, a big thank you to Kirsten Mayer, uh, who was, uh, the, the director or the, uh, committee, uh, support for the city, for this committee. And she's been, uh, allocated to a different area in amongst the city. And her role as administrative manager is, uh, no longer with the pursuit of excellence. We've got a new person involved now. Uh, we just wanted to thank you very much for all the years and, uh, of, and future endeavors that she's, uh, successful in. Uh, she's been a great liaison to all of the, um, individuals that, uh, have applied for grants. She's gone out and, uh, worked very hard for the city and this committee as well. And, uh, just one more, uh, Karen Goldhawk is a past recipient of funding, uh, on a number of occasions in biathlon. And he actually was in Grand Prairie. Turned out that the day that he was here, we had a meeting and he wanted to just be thankful very much for the support that he's got over the years from, uh, from pursuit of excellence. So it was a great day. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice, would you care to handle the, uh, minutes for the community growth committee meeting?
I move that council receive the minutes of the community growth committee meeting held Tuesday, May 2nd, 2017 as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Anything we need to correct before we adopt them? I don't see anybody ringing in, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. That motion carries. Counselor Rice, anything you want to highlight from this set of minutes?
Yes, um, we had some development, uh, permit applications we dealt with, um, but we also, uh, had a, a presentation for information on the Hughes Lake, uh, area structure plan. And I, I have to really commend, uh, administration. I, they'd made some amendments to it, um, that were very reflective of the public input they had received and they were able to make those amendments showing the importance of the input they had received, uh, without diminishing the integrity of their professional expertise, um, and their professional planning ability. So I really commend them.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Um, should we move now? Uh, I believe we called for the vote on that, didn't we? Handle that piece of business. Uh, so we'll move now to the community living committee meeting from May 2nd. Counselor Tarrant?
Mayor Given, I will move the, um, uh, community living minutes of, uh, May 7th.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant.
Second.
Uh, May 2nd, thank you. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Tarrant?
A couple items coming out of the, uh, committee. I would move that council appoint Ms. Julia Freezen, Ms. Gwen Lewis, Mr. Josh Malmston, Ms. Brenda Wheeler and Mr. Nicholas Allard as weed inspectors under the Alberta Weed Control Act. And further appoint the, uh, community living committee as an independent appeals panel under the Alberta Weed Control Act.
Hey, thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Any discussion or debate on this, uh, piece of business? This is an, and, these are annual appointments that, uh, the city needs to make about this time every year. Uh, I don't see anybody ringing in for discussion debates, so I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Tarrant?
Next one, I would move that council redirect $121,800 approved in the 2014 capital plan from knowledgeway retaining wall to Coca-Cola Center office space renovations. Um, in, in speaking to this, uh, council may recall, we had a request from the, uh, minor hockey association, um, that, uh, leases space within the Coca-Cola Center. Uh, they were looking to expand some of their space and, uh, this was a, a, a way in which, uh, by configuring some of our office space, we're able to accommodate, uh, their request. And so, um, in order to, uh, to have the money for this, uh, there was a fund, uh, recommended, um, from a retaining wall that was, uh, going to be built. It was, uh, built under, uh, existing funds or other, other funds, I should say. And, uh, and so the funds are no longer required for the retaining wall. And so, uh, that's why the, uh, request to move it.
Thanks, Counselor Tarrant. Uh, any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Let's vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, Counselor Tarrant, any other highlights from that meeting you want to share?
Uh, just, uh, one, uh, letter correspondence. We'd asked the, uh, sports council to weigh in on whether we should put a bid in for the Alberta seniors' masters games. And, uh, their recommendation was that, uh, we don't pursue the, uh, 2019 games as we have the, uh, summer games coming next year and there could be, uh, sponsorship and volunteer fatigue. And so we, uh, decided not to pursue this any further at committee.
Thanks very much, Counselor Tarrant. Uh, I think that handles all of our committee business. Um, oh, sorry, community safety, sorry, excuse me. I was looking at community safety thinking, well, we're done that one too. Um, thanks very much. Um, uh, Counselor Thiessen, if you'd like to do community safety from May 9th?
For sure. I can understand. It's confusing because it goes all the way to the other end for just the one motion. Uh, but in saying that, I would move that council receive the minutes of the community safety committee meeting held Tuesday, May 9th, 2017 as presented.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. Uh, any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. I think I'm, thank you. Thanks very much. Counselor Thiessen, any highlights you want to share?
Yeah, I can share a couple highlights. There's only two, uh, topics of discussion, uh, on that meeting. Uh, one of them was, uh, road construction projects suitable for design build. And to that degree, we, uh, we, we presented a report, uh, with information regarding potential road construction projects in the capital plan that would be suitable for a design build approach largely currently in the schedule. It honestly has more to do with sidewalks and trails, uh, and, and all that other stuff, but, uh, that is part of our road system as well. And also we discussed, uh, neighborhood speed limits as well. Uh, Counselor O'Toole had brought forward a motion for us to look into that and administration, uh, presented the committee with the report, uh, and regarding the possibility implications of reducing the speed limit in residential zones. Uh, ultimately, uh, decision was, was made, uh, to direct administration to develop a council policy and related administrative procedures for addressing neighborhood traffic priorities and report back to the committee. Uh, so we'll look forward to those reports coming back here in the near future and perhaps a lower residential speed limits in residential areas.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Um, that I think handles all of our committee business. Uh, and, but, so, and we had no items of correspondence this evening. Uh, we did have, uh, the delegation, um, uh, Superintendent McKinnon. And so if we could, uh, have a motion to receive the update from the RCMP for information, Counselor Radburn?
Thank you, Mayor Given. Will we receive the update from Superintendent McKenna for information?
Thanks very much. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Please vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Uh, I don't think we had any notices of motion tonight, uh, so that'll take us to council member reports. Uh, we have a number of, uh, reports from our external agencies, boards and commissions. Uh, and so I will, uh, first recognize Counselor Radburn with the Grand Prairie Public Library Board.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Um, just, uh, some highlights from our May 9th board meeting. We did have a presentation on the services of and a tour of the peace library system. Linda Duplessis is the, uh, is the director there and it was very informative. Our planning committee, uh, has met with Arlene and, uh, looking to provide some feedback, uh, on our matrix for public board member, library board member appointees. Uh, and we, and we approved officially a server replacement project. And then there were four or five, uh, policies we also dealt with. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Uh, the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association, Counselor O'Toole?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. We had our AGM here just last week and, uh, we had, uh, a new person take over as chairman, Jonathan Clarkson. You may know him from, uh, Nighthawk Recreation Area. We also had three board members that were, uh, stepped down and we've got three replacements, uh, Karna Gensheth, that's not right, Karna Germshet, uh, Barb Shannon and Heather Cooney. So they'll be taking roles as well on the executive of the, the board. And we just released a new, uh, tourism, uh, booklet that's out in your, every place where you can go tourism, whether hotels, restaurants and stuff. And there's a really unique app that you can get for your phone. It's an interactive app that, uh, if you want more information on some designated pages in the, on the, um, uh, the brochure, uh, it's, it's kind of exciting to see the dinosaurs coming out of your phone. Um, but it's not only just for, uh, tourists. It's, uh, Grand Prairie and, uh, if you happen to be planning out and going out in the region, you can find out, uh, different days. I guess we can call ourselves tourists, but, uh, different events going on in different communities in the Peace Region. Thank you.
Hey, thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Rice?
Is that the 150th anniversary, uh, publication that was done on a regional basis?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Rice, Counselor O'Toole. Uh, next we had Grand Prairie Sports Council. Back to Counselor Radburn. It's like.
Thank you, Mayor Given.
On that side of the table.
Um, getting whiplash? Oh, you're all right. Today at four o'clock, we had our sports council AGM and, uh, did the normal, uh, kind of AGM meeting with, uh, reports from the executive director, the chair and, uh, financial acceptance of statements, uh, looking good. An appointment of auditors, executive director's report. But I, I do want to just quickly say that, or share with the group, we had elections. We've staggered the public board representatives, public members of the board. And so I'll just, uh, give you, uh, the names. Um, and then after, we had a short meeting of the new board to select the executives. So what I'm sharing with you is the result of both meetings. Lee Golli, still our chair. Uh, Jody Minton is our vice chair. Katie Bibberoff, Berdoff is our secretary and, uh, Norley Gilkison is our treasurer. And other members are Chris Lutala, Holt Remfrey, Brad Bradbury and, uh, myself as the appointee from the city and Darrell, Counselor Darrell Beeson, appointee from, uh, the county. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Edburn. Uh, I think that takes us to Grand Spirit Foundation and Counselor Rice. Now, the right side of the table's got to get in the game here and get on the scoreboard eventually. The left side is totally dominating. Yeah. Counselor Rice?
Uh, pretty exciting. Um, Lakeview Manor opening is fast approaching. Uh, this 150 unit facility, uh, is scheduled to open in May and residents should start moving in in June. And, uh, the lodge rooms at Lake will, Lakeview will provide supportive living with 24-hour staffing, access to nursing, personal care and medication assistance throughout but a health services home care. And, uh, all meals and snacks could be provided as well as weekly housekeeping. And the one and two-bedroom independent apartment suites will include a daily meal served at noon. So all residents will enjoy the grand amenity space with ample natural light and outstanding views. And the common areas have been designed to promote recreational opportunities and to encourage participation, inclusion, socializing, and community. It will also offer a variety of amenities such as a fitness room, a hair salon, a library, a gaming craft room, a large multipurpose room with an adjoining family kitchen, and there's even a dance floor. And there's free residence laundry on each room, five elevators, top-notch security. And so, all of the seniors will be able to relax and enjoy the comforts of their new home. As well, lower-income residents of lodge units and one-bedroom apartments may be eligible for a rental reduction. This information has been provided to the city and it's been to all of the Grand Spirit partners. And it's been asked that, we put this on our website, there is a rumor going around, as I mentioned last council meeting, that Lakeview is full. It is not. And so, we want to get this information out there. And it's a very special welcome addition to the seniors' housing in this area. I would also point out to council, or make council aware, that the general manager of Grand Spirit, Debbie Normington, will be retiring. And so, the search is on for a new general manager.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice, and particularly for that update about Ms. Normington. She's been there for a long period of time in her previous role and as the overall director. So certainly, that'll be a significant change. Next up is the Inner City Forum on Social Policy. Counselor Thiessen.
Hey, I got us on the board, guys. You gotta pick, pull up your socks over here. Can't be Sidney Crosby myself. Yeah, so we had a meeting on Friday, May 12th, 2017, in Laduke for the Inner City Forum on Social Policy. We had a few presentations, and of course, the camaraderie of many different municipal leaders in administration and elected officials. We started out the day with a discussion on the carbon tax. We had a presentation from Tim Weiss, the special advisor to climate change implementation to Minister Shannon Phillips. With a strong background in wind, many questions were asked on the phase-out of coal, on rebates to the household and the small-business tax, and how they're investing or reinvesting in green infrastructure through the carbon tax. One thing that was brought up and mentioned that should be interesting to note is that the Urban Residential Solar Incentives Program has already been announced, and it should be available with all the program requirements and details soon, as of mid-June, according to Mr. Weiss. And he said the program requirements will be retroactive a year. So if you wanted to get in on the program, and you got in a little too early, you can still get your rebates in for making that investment in a green future. Interesting stat to also put out, I don't know if you know this, but 50% of all of our country's wind power is generated right here in Alberta. And the province of Alberta is moving and making a shift. They're tendering out and looking for land, waiting for that to clear, to produce a large solar farm. So that 50% of all of our province's powers will come out of solar and wind, which is kind of cool. We're not just an oil country here in Alberta. Finally, we moved on. We had a presentation from George Alvarez and Krista Carmichael, just a provincial update, one on the information-sharing strategy. And the province is working on new policies and procedures with how they go about sharing information between organizations who are serving the population. Now, they said that is a little bit risky, talking about sensitive health issues. So they're not quite there yet with the Health Act. But where they are at with government is they said that they are now accountable. All organizations and people are accountable for the information we don't share. So if it's information that can help somebody get back on their feet or receive better service for whatever they're suffering from or whatever they need, then that's how they're moving about it. Krista Carmichael added that the plan for pretend poverty has a fall timeline, and that we'll be seeing that soon. She said part of the plan is a reduction on school fees, which is good to hear, continuation of the child benefit. And she also made note that Ontario currently, overall, fiscally, financially, is at a $300 billion deficit, but still somehow managed to balance their books, whereas our provincial government didn't balance our books, and we're sitting at an $11 billion deficit. So I think we got a long way to go to get as bad in the books as Ontario's. But she said there's indicators of poverty that are working with municipalities, and also noted that the ASHA Action Plan was released last week, and they're working on processes and procedures to streamline, simplify, and remove barriers and make it more transparent so people can receive their funding as it is required. And then they are also working on developing a plan to better understand FCSS funding and the province's continuing role to municipalities, and whether or not they're going to increase that to help prevent poverty by adding programs and other things to municipalities. So all good stuff, really, that was presented. And yeah, I've got a few more here.
Thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. I think you may have, with respect to the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance.
Yes, just a note. I wanted to make sure that everyone, the public's aware. I don't see many members of the public here, but to my council members, the Mighty Peace Watershed Alliance is hosting their annual AGM, May 26th, at the Saw Ridge Inn in Peace River. Everyone is welcome to attend. We are going to be unveiling our consultant's work and the approved work by the board and the executive board of the State of the Watershed Plan. So we'll be rolling that out. It's the kickoff to the implementation. So if you got any questions on whether or not we did it right, I'd strongly encourage everyone to come. The only catch is that you have to register before noon on May 19th.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Next up is the Peace Library System.
I just scored a hat-trick for Sidney Crosby over here, catching up to you guys on that side of the table. Yes, Peace Library System, we met this past Saturday, May 13th, just a general board meeting, and some stuff I covered the last council meeting. But I will highlight the notes that they sent out to all the members of the Peace Library System Board. So this was our annual general meeting. It was also our last annual general meeting for the Peace Library System. And as with all annual general meetings, we received our 2016 annual report and audited financial statements. And those copies have already been distributed out to councils, library boards, and school divisions. The board then approved the amendments to the procedural bylaws to eliminate the May annual general meeting and institute an organizational meeting prior to the end of November. And the election of officers for the Peace Library Systems will then take place on November 25th, 2017. And this, just a reminder, is based on the fact that everybody around the table either works at a library in the North Peace area or is an elected official that is pretty much mandated to take part in these board meetings. So to have members of the public come out when we already... Everyone's already there en masse at every meeting. We figured we'll just do an organizational meeting. That passed through unanimously. Finally, the director, if you're at this past Community Living Committee, you will know that the director reported that Peace Library System had received a grant of $1,010,000 of provincial infrastructure money. And the funds are going to ensure that we can have repairs to the roof and other areas of our building as needed. Again, this was the first time we got a funding injection for infrastructure for the building in 30 years, which actually built Peace Library System 30 years ago. Finally, we also received our Indigenous Populations Grant. It was slightly up this year based on population numbers, so just over $200,000 based on the population figures. And we're going to work in tandem with member libraries to develop a plan to best utilize those funds so that we're using them for exactly what they're designed for.
Thank you. Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. And I think you get to close it out with the Water North Coalition.
Whoa, four goals in one game. I'm doing good here right now. Yes. Oh. Water North Coalition met Thursday, May 11th, in Cold Lake, Alberta. I got to be honest, originally, I wasn't sure I was going to go to this meeting. It's a seven-hour drive, and it just so happened that I could piggyback other meetings in other cities and make it all worthwhile. I was really glad that I went because it was my first time into Cold Lake, which is a beautiful place and definitely has some of the freshest, like, municipal water lakes that anyone can drink out of. They hardly have to filter anything out of their water. And I saw firsthand by taking a tour of their water treatment plant. And really, there's nothing to it. They don't have to add any chemical. They just pull from the bottom, and it's the cleanest water, coldest water, and it tastes good, too. So during that meeting, besides taking the tour of the water treatment plant, we also had a panel on reclaimed and greywater. Some of the people that were part of that panel were Joey Hurley from Environment and Parks. She's a water policy advisor. Jessica Papa-Dynettz, she was from Alberta Health Services. And Sidney Manning, the chief plumbing and gas administrator. So they discussed the definitions of stormwater and water reuse and some of the issues that surround that in northern, remote, rural communities, and what kind of issues the province faces, Alberta Health Services faces, especially in regards to putting chemicals within the water. And then Sidney talked about how it goes with plumbing and gas. But he had an interesting thing to say, a lot of little tidbits of info. But he said, "As defined in law, is that when rain falls from the sky and lands on, let's say, City Hall, it is then called stormwater. But if rain lands on the roof of your house and lands in your yard, it is dubbed rainwater. And we can collect drainwater. We just can't collect stormwater." So he said that there's a lot of work policy-wise for at least rainwater collection because right now, you can't collect it if you're in a commercial-zoned area or if you're an industrial-zoned area, but you can in a residential-zoned area. So it's interesting, at least, how I thought it was. And finally, we had a report for water management in First Nations communities. It was a small presentation by Big Stone Cree, as well as Rosie Redmanovich, environmental liaison with the Technical Services Advisory Group, part of INAC. From there, we moved off to the water treatment plant tour, and then I was off to Laduke for another meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Counselor Thiessen. Counselor Rice?
You can't collect rainwater.
Well, just as per the definition, okay, oh, excellent. I had some... So rainwater harvesting is a single-family residential in the law, as it's written. If rain falls off the roof of your house and you have a rain barrel sitting outside, you can collect it because you're marked as residential. But for some reason, the law does not permit rainwater to fall off the roof of an industrial building, a business building, commercial building, and come down and collect it because then it's stormwater, and you cannot collect stormwater, which I think is weird. But eventually, I guess the law will catch up to logic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thanks very much, Counselor Thiessen. And so, we're onto council member roundtable report, and I think I'll start over here with Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. I've got this hot, new item that I need to discuss. It's the Municipal Government Day Report. Yeah, there's lots of big, bold, fascinating things happening, and the news release will happen later this week. So Municipal Government Day met on May 5th. We made some serious decisions to move the event from June 28th, or changed to June 28th from previously June 14th. There will be a number of things taking place at our usual location in Muscosi-Park. Part of this is, this event celebration is part of our fabulous Five Canada 150 festivities the city is presenting this year. There will be a free entertainment act extended to Municipal Government Day to approximately 8:30. What that act is, I can't tell you till Thursday. The show will begin at 5:30. The featured entertainment will be confirmed and will be announced later this week, like I said. The Municipal Government Day will include all things that normal people would... Normal residents would appreciate. Community barbecue, bouncy castles, face painting, a mini train that Helen will probably ride in, and city equipment and displays and community exhibits. There will be free transit again this year, and the Disabled Transportation Society will provide transportation into the park for seniors and those that are disabled. Regional municipalities, mini golf event is planned, and this has a Canada 150 theme, where each hold is representative of a province or territory. And we do have a contingency plan if things... But don't worry about it. It's going to be bright and sunny, so don't worry about the contingency plan. There's a number of other events that I attended this last two weeks, lots. But I'll just mention a couple things. I did do the Arbor Day annual ceremony at St. Gerard's School, E. Cole St. Gerard's. I was attended by Counselor McLean. And earlier in the day, Counselor Clayton was there bringing the trees for all the grade-one students. And I did attend the Goodwill Greatness Awards and Proclamation. That was a great event, seeing individuals that are uniquely gifted. And it's... What it is, is people that have disabilities, mental illness, brain injury. There's an ability for them to work in the private sector and make some money, be trained, and be educated in life skills. There's mentors that work at Goodwill and other areas of Goodwill's... Departments, I guess is a bright term. And anyhow, it's well-attended, and I ended up giving a proclamation reading. And there's more there, but I know we're running late tonight, and Chris kind of took the show tonight, so I'll just back off. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Just because Counselor Thiessen had a number of updates from his external committees. You know, if one council member on that side had to make all those updates as well, maybe somebody else would have stole the show, aside from his jacket, which does steal the show, but, you know, in fairness. Counselor Rice?
Okay. I attended the Tourism AGM, and yes, congratulations to Jonathan Clarkson and the new board of directors. I attended the State of the City address and lunch, and a big thank you to the mayor. I think he presented where we're at in the city very succinctly and very impressively. And I attended the Youth Council filming and awards presentation of Roughnecks to Rainbows. Pretty impressive presentation. Just one thing, and I didn't know where I should put this, but council a few days ago received a letter from Mr. Paul Whitaker regarding the state of the concerns from the Alberta Forest Products Association, asking us to take some action. And I'd like to refer that to the appropriate committee. Do I do that here?
We can just get it on the committee. I think you just did. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. We'll move on. Counselor Thiessen?
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. Yeah, a few things. I too would like to chime in and say that on May 4th, Bill, I thought you did an excellent job with the State of the City address. I was in attendance, a little more muted than I am here today in my attire. But yeah, it was very good. And you know that Bill made some great points, and it was very succinct, and the message is well-heard because I think he got away with zero questions that day, so one question in total, but wasn't like previous ones. Earlier that day, I had the opportunity to give greetings on behalf of the city and also to be an adjudicator on behalf of adjudication at the Regional Heritage Fair, taking a look at different students' projects and evaluating them based on the work that they had put in and the amount of knowledge and all that stuff. It was truly a great event. I've been a part of it for now four straight years. And I don't think I'll say no if they ask me again to come back next year, elected or unelected. I'll be there because I do see the valuable benefit in teaching our history, especially Canadian history, and promoting that heritage. Finally, I'd like to put a shout-out. May 2nd to 4th, we saw a young leader rising in our community. First, at Mighty Peace Day or We Day, she was a speaker there. The next night, on May 3rd, I went to the Extra Credit Stories Were Sharing workshop for, or I guess, presentation with teachers. Counselor Radburn, Counselor O'Toole, myself were in attendance. If I forgot anyone else, I apologize. But this person also spoke then about how one person can make a difference, how a teacher can make a difference and really change the course of one person's life. And then finally, she followed it up as the leader, one of the leaders of Youth Council, as they debuted their Redneck to Rainbow documentary on LGBTQ+ rights within our community. If you ever want to see your mayor cry, I'd say definitely check out the documentary. He almost made me cry there, too. But truly, the work was put in. And I guess I just said her name, Truly Love. She's one of our leaders on Youth Council. And, uh, I guess I just said her name, Truly Love. Uh, she's, uh, one of our leaders on Youth Council. And, uh, she showed that she's not just a leader of the youth, she's a leader within our community three straight days in a row. So congratulations, girl. You keep going. I, I predict, uh, many big and bright things for you and all those associated with you in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilperson Thieson. Councilor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll just speak to, uh, three and one will be lengthy and two won't be. I went to the State of the City Address. I usually try to attend like all councillors it. Uh, it's an overall view of councils as a whole. I believe it was very well-done, especially the last chart, uh, the last two terms, the way property taxes have been going over the last six, seven years. And it shows that it's staying at a level that I think we can continue or do better the next councils. We might get from top property taxes to maybe the middle, so kudos on that and I think it's good and I hope that progresses. Uh, also, I'll speak to, the other one quick is the Annual City House Scrub. And, um, the reason I'm going to speak to this, it's only something quick, but this one had a committee and it was really fun. Uh, there was a few listening in Alberta with Councilor O'Toole, I remember, and Councilor Clayton and actually the city manager was there. We got the judge from the stinkiest, uh, thing found to whatever, and one was a pair of underwear and we never smelled it or not and we just rewarded it. So the committee did a very good job, but actually we had twenty, thirty people in the room here and working together as employees is very important. And the city scrub, you look at our city and what do you hear about in the spring is ugly. And we really need to do a city scrub, otherwise we don't get spruced up quick. So my last comment to talk about is on, uh, May eighth to eleventh, I went to a disaster forum conference in Bath, uh, working together to build capacity. And I'll speak to a couple of things here that I thought were pointed from the, the conference. Between nineteen eighty-seven and two thousand and twelve, uh, we had about seventy-eight events and disasters in Alberta. Cost about five billion dollars. Two thousand and thirteen, the floods in High River Calgary were six billion dollars. Um, we also, uh, we're not including with, uh, Slave Lake, Fort Murray, the numbers aren't all in yet. Um, one of the lead speakers, Shane Schreider, Director, Alberta Emergency Service. They had great panelists at this conference, spoke about how they got eighty-eight thousand people out of Fort Murray. We all know the story, but he also spoke of some about the heavy industry stepping up like Shell, flying people to bases and getting them out of the community, so they really stepped up. Uh, three of the big lessons is culture of cooperation and collaboration was really emphasized over and over at the conference. Building networks before the event and keep building them. So basically, I think even our G-Prep can be built and enhanced even more aggressively, not just internally, but politically and for communication out and about with, uh, elected officials. Uh, and during the event, communicate, 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 communicate if there's something wrong. Never stop communicating. Uh, another speaker was, uh, Dana Woodworth, his team leader, Recovery Task Force in, uh, Fort McMurray. They, after the, the disaster they had there last year, which was just, probably celebrated one year of it. I wouldn't say celebration, they're still going through it. The council in Fort Murray had to develop a team and they made a nine-member committee. Three of them were councillors. I believe it was Fort Murray, uh, Regional Municipality put fifty million dollars into this recovery team. I'll have to find out where exactly they got the money, but maybe it was them themselves. They started with seventy staff in their first year. They're down to forty staff. So this is recovery, going through and through. So this is what could happen to council if we be alert. I don't know if you look at any reserves we got or for disasters. So this is something Fort Murray Council had to deal with. Um, another one was, um, moving on to Red Cross. Red Cross collected, uh, three hundred and twenty-three million through, Canada, we heard about that. All the generous donations federally, provincially, that includes all of it. They had nineteen thousand, uh, client assessment completions, hundred and twenty-seven, six thousand, uh, electronic fund transfers. And I'm not going to get into the amounts they transferred and everything. They also did lots for, uh, small businesses. But there was another thing we went to, uh, it was called Transcar Rail Safety. And in Bath, they have CP and CN, a lot of, a lot of routes are being traveled, dangerous goods and hazardous materials. So I guess I'm going to, before I finish here, um, I went to a demonstration where they said they had a casualty there and then ammonia incident and spraying water to keep it down. And I just thought, wow, I, seven years, I've never seen that in the city of Grand Prairie. So I, I'd like to direct a question to, uh, Acting Director Chris Manuel if he would know if we're looking into, uh, transcare and more areas for our, you know, emergency services to train and train our community. And what I found responsible there is they actually brought us in buses to watch the whole thing demonstrate. And I thought it'd be a great idea not only for councillors, but people of the community and kids. So my question is, are we looking at that?
Sure. So, Councilor, uh, McLean, this is an opportunity for councilmembers to present updates to council on, uh, activities, uh, that you've attended. If there's something you'd like an update from administration, uh, from one of your learnings, maybe an email to the appropriate director and then that director could respond back to all councilmembers.
Okay, sorry about that, my roundtail, but I, I do believe it's something that, uh, we as a city could be enhancing and looking at more directly. Um, I think we meet twice at G-Prep. It's very good internally, but externally for communications, I think we can enhance it and I hope we do. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor McLean. Councilor Logan.
Quite a busy, uh, couple of weeks for me and, uh, a lot of it is repeated, but, uh, I just wanted to pull out two things that I don't imagine it will be repeated. First is, uh, my attendance at, uh, a board meeting of PACE, uh, society that does a tremendous amount of job, a tremendous job in our community. Uh, it's a non-governmental organization. It does get a, a lot of support from, uh, the levels of government. And, uh, I'm very proud to say that I've been a member of that, uh, uh, board for literally decades. And, uh, it was, just thought it was about time that I should give them a shout-out. The other one that's quite, uh, quite different is, uh, I also sat on for, uh, uh, years on the Grand Prairie Museum Society. And, uh, they have officially, uh, in the last, uh, couple of weeks, uh, wound up, uh, disbanding. It, it, it was always kept as a, uh, an entity that would help with raising, uh, funds from, uh, other governmental, uh, levels. And that, uh, has come to an end for them and for the lottery funds. I think that's the most significant thing. And, uh, there's now, the, uh, museum is all entirely under, uh, the city and there's not even, uh, the Grand Prairie Museum Society anymore. It was just a little bit nostalgic. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Councilor Logan. Councilor Clayton.
Thank you, Mayor Given. Attended many of the events that other councillors have already mentioned. So in a matter of time, I will, uh, mention, uh, attended the Proclamation for PACE, Walk a Mile in Her Shoes. It was a great event, a great turnout. Uh, although the weather didn't cooperate, uh, it was really good to see everybody that was there. Um, attended the First Annual Home Builders Skeet Shoot, uh, on Saturday, which also was pouring rain and freezing, but there was about sixty people there shooting guns. So that was always fun. Once a year is good enough for me, but, uh, it was enjoyable. Uh, also attended the Canadian Mental Health Week BBQ, uh, with many other councillors that may have already been mentioned. Uh, it was a great turnout and good discussion by the group that was there. And I think everything else has been mentioned. Thanks.
Thanks, Councilor Clayton. Councilor Terren.
Thanks, Mayor Given. Uh, again, I'll, uh, went to a lot of different events. I'll just, uh, stick to one here though. Uh, on Friday, we attended the City and Symphony, uh, put on by the Grand Prairie Boys Choir. Uh, a great addition to the city. It's a tremendous, uh, legacy from the, uh, hundredth, uh, anniversary of the city and, and from the, uh, that got the kickstart, uh, event got the kickstart during that process. And so it's great to see it continuing to flourish. And, uh, again, another sold-out performance, a thousand people, uh, attending and, uh, wonderful to see such fantastic performers, both local and professionals from, uh, from outside of the city.
Thanks, Councilor Terren. Councilor Radburn.
Let me continue with the, uh, arts and cultural theme. The two that I'll highlight would be, I, uh, I think it was Councillors Thieson and O'Toole joined me at the Grand Prairie and District Music Festival Grand Concert. The grand, the grand concert was awesome. But what's more awesome is I think there's thirty-seven hundred participants in the music festival this year, thirty-seven. And the vast majority are youth, so it's a great forum to share, um, their talents and skills. And also rec, uh, shout-out to the short, short shot, gee, shot, you. The Short Real Film Festival opening and ag, and again, um...
Still didn't get it. Real shorts.
Oh, I, um, again, the significant growth in the participation of our youth in the Short Real Film Festival. No? Oh, real shorts, okay. Um, and Counselor O'Toole asked me to shout-out, uh, I'll accommodate him. Shout-out to Don Golden Autobody, thirty-four years as a local business in our community, I think it's already mentioned. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Radburn. Um, I'll just provide a couple of updates. Um, on Tuesday the second, uh, the city manager and I attended a meeting with Wembley Council to speak that to them about, uh, the impending, uh, connection of the waterline and, uh, negotiations for them to consider, um, between the city of Grand Prairie and the town of Wembley, uh, with respect to them joining Aqua Terra. Later that week, um, I represented the city of Grand Prairie at GDPR-C Convocation. Great to see the, all the students, uh, from, uh, across our region, uh, convocating and celebrating their achievements. Um, and I also wanted to, uh, acknowledge that, uh, council, a number of councilmembers, uh, joined me and the city manager in meeting with representatives of the Kelly Lake First Nation, uh, community here, uh, at City Hall, uh, an initial start to an opening of a dialogue and certainly appreciated the opportunity to do that. Um, and the following morning, uh, I had an opportunity to attend, uh, a meeting of the, uh, Oilfield Transportation Group, um, that is a part of the, uh, the chapter of the Canadian Transportation Association here in the Grand Prairie region, uh, with respect to regional, uh, transportation priorities, uh, particularly the Highway Forty-three X bypass, um, and some of the other initiatives going on. Uh, certainly appreciated hearing the priorities of the group and I suggested to them that, uh, their insight could be particularly helpful to the municipalities in the region as we work together to try and identify the municipal priorities for provincial transportation infrastructure. Obviously, they're the ones using it, uh, for industry's purposes. Um, and, uh, they, uh, they committed that they would do that and give us some feedback so we could use that when we discuss with the other municipalities in the region, what should be our priority. Um, we had a good discussion about the relative priority of Highway Forty-three X bypass, uh, the Future Interchange and Highway Forty-South. Uh, I sort of suggested to them that, uh, although we can work together to try and meet all of those needs, um, that we may not be able to get them all done at once. And so I sort of asked them, uh, what their, you know, on balance, what their priority would be and they weren't prepared at that point to, to sort of give an opinion. Uh, but I think it gave them food for thought, just sort of recognizing that we only have so many demands and on a practical basis, the province is going to only be able to meet so many of them at any one time. Um, so I appreciated that opportunity to have that discussion. And then finally, on Friday, the, uh, twelfth, I, uh, hosted the mayor's Fourth Annual Interfaith Breakfast. I want to acknowledge the councilmembers that attended, certainly appreciated that, um, as well as the community attendants, uh, bowed in line with last year. I think we're between eighty and a hundred attendees at the event. Um, and a really great, uh, community-building opportunity. And so I just wanted to recognize the, uh, the volunteers, uh, that acted at the steering committee and, uh, our fantastic speaker, Dr. Ingrid Madison. I really spoke to the, the, the dollar value of faith-based communities and, and the service that they provide, uh, both in communities all across North America, and I think that message really resonated and hit home. Uh, and with that, we'll call our meeting adjourned. Thank you.